Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting for September the 2nd. And it's 6:04. Roll call please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Obal.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Wallace and Mayor Protem Samwar are not in attendance.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, every being of us, all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders. And military members please. Thank you. Maybe Siri. Next we have citizen comments. Is there any citizen comments in regards to the closed session items? Is there anyone on the phone? 6:05. Here and now coming back into the chamber, any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing now closing the citizen comments at 6:05. And we are going to retire into closed session. We have two items. Item number six. Conference with labor negotiator, government code section 54957.6. With labor negotiator Jose Antonio Ramirez, city manager, employee organizations, clerical bargaining unit, police supervisory, management and confidential, Livingston Police Officers Association, Public Works and Parks Unit. And item number seven, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government codes section 54956.9, subdivision D2 and E1. And we have two different matters. So we are going to retire into closed session at 6:06. And we'll be right back. Thank you. May be Siri.
Welcome to our regular council meeting for September the 2nd at 7:11. And this is not a commercial. Can we please stand? Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you, may be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Upal.
Present.
Councilmember, Mayor Potem Semer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Wallace is not in attendance.
So, we also want you to keep Mr. Wallace, our council member, and his wife and your guys' prayers as well. He actually just texted in and he wants to participate under the medical clause that allows him to participate in a council meeting. So, our legal will communicate out a moment and then he'll be recognized and we'll provide him with the number for him to call in.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Set forth in Government Code Section 54953 subdivision I-2, a council member may participate under the just cause exception, which includes medical absences. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor to see if there's a motion and a vote.
Yes, so if someone wants to make a motion to, I guess would be to allow or to acknowledge because he's already, yeah. Got it, okay. Are there any questions?
I'll motion to acknowledge Mr. Wallace's phone call attendance.
I'll second that.
Was that second by Mayor Moran?
Mayor Moran, yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Semer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passed this by about a 40.
All right, so we're thinking he will be joining anytime soon if he's, if, Mr. Wallace, are you already on the call?
I just provided him with the number.
All right, so, all right. Okay, next we have changes to the agenda. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? I'm looking through my notes, is there any motions, is there anyone, does anyone have any questions with any, anything on the agenda? If not, what?
Was there any close question pronounced?
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, the city council met in closed session to discuss items six and seven from this evening's closed session agenda. Deliberation occurred, direction was given, no final action was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you, so I do want to pull item number... Let me just wait until we get to the consent agenda items and then I'll ask a question instead of pulling it right now. So, if there's no other change, if there's no changes, let's move forward.
Mr. Moran, quick question?
Yes.
On item three, our receiving file, we have it listed on the agenda in our initial summary, but I don't see it included in the broader staff report.
That is a clerical mistake, it should have been the treasurer's report for July 31st, 2025.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anything else? All right, if not, we're moving forward. Okay, next we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by a mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Please step forward, say your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor.
You can take it up.
Good evening, can you hear me? I'm pretty loud, so. Hi, my name is Mireya Alvarado and I am a project manager for Tierra Santa Villas. That is a new development here led by Carol Ornellas and Visionary Home Builders. And I'm here to share a very exciting update with you all, and that is that our application will go live tomorrow and we are expecting an opportunity for all of the residents of Livingston to apply. I wanted to share a couple of key points about that process with you all tonight, and that is our application system, which we've worked really hard on to make it, make sure that it's very easily understandable. We've created a QR system and posted it outside of the development so tenants can drive by or also look it up online. And then there's also a dial-in system where they could call and get support with submitting an application. So, that's that part of it. Additionally, what I wanted to mention is that the tenants or the residents of Livingston do have priority in our application process because it is based on a lottery system. So, residents and then also this particular project has a farm worker component, which also prioritizes any farm workers that are, fall under that category. So, those are our two priorities. Again, the way that it's going to work is Visionary does also handle the property management piece. So, after doing the lottery, there will be an opportunity for applicants to get reviewed, there's a background check, and a very in-depth application process to make sure that we prioritize safety. And then we anticipate the whole process taking about a month, expecting residents to start moving in October 6th. The other piece that I wanted to share is just some of the amenities for this project. It does have a head start. Also, we've partnered with Central Valley Services and they will come and support with financial classes, with a variety of different classes for our tenants that will be held in the community center. So, again, we hope to bring a development that is very safe and that will accommodate a total of 80 families. It's 80 units, will have two playgrounds and a full-size basketball court. So, again, in addition to that, I just want to say thank you to the city manager and our partnership here with everyone, the city staff, that has been very helpful and partners in this work to bring in this project here. So, open to questions, but I've also provided details to the city manager, but again, anytime there's a question, feel free to contact me.
Council, any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. You said that it's going to have a head start facility?
Yes.
Who's going to be managing that program?
So, we have partnered with, I believe it's Stanco, and they are going to be leasing out the space and providing head start services to children that are two to five years in age, and I think the full capacity is 30 students.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I had a question. Mireya, thanks for coming and talking more about your guys' project. Curious to know what this lottery system looks like. Can you talk a little bit more about how that's going to play out?
Yes, so, we take all of the applications and again, they highlight the priorities and people that have those two components that I mentioned as far as farm worker and also residents will be put at the top of the list. But it's a public lottery, I believe we're doing in partnership with the city. We haven't identified the exact location where, but just so that it's fair, we do make it a public lottery where everyone is invited and basically as the numbers are coming up, they're displayed on a screen for everyone to see. And then from there, we set appointments to do the one-on-one application. It is going to consist of a variety of factors, like I mentioned, a background check, but that is definitely what our lottery consists of, just an overall equal process to give everyone the opportunity to apply.
Definitely, thank you.
And the application goes live tomorrow, correct?
It goes live tomorrow through the QR code and then also they can call in. We've advertised online and in the newspaper, also hired the property managers, so they're working out of the development next door temporarily. Their office is going to be around from there until we have enough sustainability at the new development.
And so, we did receive the information, Mireya, so thank you so much. So, tomorrow, we, since it's going to go live tomorrow, we'll go ahead and provide that information, the QR code and information, so that it's broadcast in our social media platform.
That's great, thank you so much. And again, we are available for any questions at any time, especially being the first day, we want to make sure that the process is seamless.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber at this time? Please step forward.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to just personally invite folks here.
Can you say your name for the record, please?
My name is Patricia Zamora, I go by Paz as well. I'm a resident and founder of Seven Gen Art House here in Livingston, and Seven Gen was selected to participate in the 2025 Cal Core project sponsored by Community Vision. It's a statewide cohort and it's focused on helping support emerging and small community developers in the community. And so, I have had the pleasure of working with the mayor, city manager, and also Jackie and Miguel from planning to bring this project to Livingston. And there's two things that we'll be doing, I'll speak about the first one and then Stella will speak about the second. We are doing a, for my project at Cal Core, I have been here seven generations, my family, I'm an artist, my mother was a super big supporter of art, and so in my home, we have residencies for especially women. We work with UC Merced, Saneslaw State, I'm a graduate of Stan State as well, and in doing programs here and have seen the benefits of how art and culture help people to build their leadership, their self-agency, their generational trauma, as well as create beautiful art for the community. And so, we are going to do a community listening session, conversation around ideas from residents, from all of you, I hope that you all can go and stop by, around how would you want to see art and culture and how would that contribute to community wellness? And we have many cultures, beautiful cultures here in this community, how can we showcase that and highlight it? And so, I'm going to stop there. We're also, Cuéllanos Coffee Shop, neighbors work together, we have Livingston High School Art Program, Art Club is participating, we have the library that's also participating. So, we have a lot of different folks here from the community as well and everyone is with us. And if you have any questions?
My name is Lucis De La Estrada, I'm a lifelong resident of Livingston and Livingston, I want to say like my parents lived here forever and I did too, but I currently live in Delhi. But I became a partner, not a partner, but a participant with the Paz's programs. And right now, we are in the midst of having a Dia de los Puertos, I think you've seen this poster all over Livingston, and we are encouraging all different ethnicities to participate if possible. We're going to do have it across the street over here, we're going to put up altars at the park here at the porch yard, and well, that's basically it, it's going to be our number 31st from 5 to 90.
We hope it will activate more folks walking through the community, which will help support fundraising for the rec flex. And also, we have about nine businesses that are signed up to do community alters, so we'll do a map and people, it will also help support local businesses. And we also are waiting right now because we might have a taiko drumming, zonarotcho, seniors from the folclorico, so it's really open to all cultures because we all celebrate our ancestors' loved ones. So, if anyone else wants to join in, please, you are welcome. Do you have any?
Any questions?
And you all have a flyer and I hope you can come out and if you have any questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber? At this time, is there anyone, any citizen comments on the phone? Here and now, closing the citizen comments at 7:28. Next item on the agenda, we have awards, presentations, and proclamations. Item number one, presentation by Sarah Bernal from Valley Water Collaborative, Valley Water Conservative, Safe Drinking Water Community Outreach.
Thank you.
We're just going to start this meeting real quick. So thank you so much for having me, Sarah Bernal, I'm with the Valley Water Collaborative. And let me get started. Okay, so yeah, I was invited here to share a little bit about our program. We're new to your area. We've been servicing Modesto and Turlock since 2020, but new to Merced, Madera, Yolo, Eastern San Joaquin. All of those counties are new to our work. And I wanted just to share a little bit about what it is that we're doing and about what we're hoping we can get from a partnership or at least in some sort of relationship building with the city. So Valley Water Collaborative, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life in the Central Valley by providing residents who need it with access to safe drinking water and by engaging in initiatives that safeguard and improve the quality of groundwater. You can see that map, that's our service map. The areas in red are all of the more highly contaminated with nitrate parts of the Central Valley sub-basins. We offer free well testing and bottled water to any household that's impacted by nitrate contamination. And we're also looking to work with not just cities or counties, but community service districts and special districts around long-term solutions, which could be things like consolidation projects or the development of other small water systems. And then we're also going to be engaging with your GSA, so your groundwater sustainability agencies around aquifer water management and improving the quality of the groundwater here in Merced. So the problem that we're mostly focused on is nitrate and the sources for nitrate are primarily from irrigated ag fertilizers. It does come from some septic systems, water treatment facilities, food and wine processing, dairy bovine, and also poultry operations. All have permits to discharge nitrate into the groundwater. The biggest health risks for nitrate are particularly to infants and pregnant women. They are unable to digest the nitrate in the same way, and I'm not sure if you've ever heard of blue baby syndrome, but essentially nitrate will inhibit oxygen from connecting to the hemoglobin in your blood, which will then ultimately deprive you of oxygen. On private wells is our target audience, so private wells have never been regulated by the state. And essentially, that means that we're the first program to offer free well testing for anyone with a domestic well in this area. And we will be essentially, right, so far, we've tested about 1,200 wells. We have about 800 families receiving bottled water. And we're doing a lot of different community outreach on our short-term goals of well testing and bottled water. This is just a little bit about our engagement, which is you'll see postcards coming to everyone's door in the community soon. We did not send postcards to people who are on municipal water systems, so you may not receive one at your house, but as soon as you're outside of the public water system, we will be getting postcards out to everybody there. Right now, so this is specific to Merced and your aquifer system. Right now, we've identified that there are about 520 wells that are at risk of exceeding the health standard for nitrate. When we launched into this county in February of 2025, so far, we've had 140 people apply to get their wells tested in Merced County. Forty-one of all of, 41% of all of our applicants have actually come from Merced, so there's been a really great engagement from this community. We've sampled, 123 applications were sent to the lab, and about 105 of those are already known to exceed the health standard for nitrate. Out of all of the ones that we've tested, 46% of these wells are going above the nitrate health standard. You're going to see this next 123 TCP. There's 41% of wells have been tested and have found to have 123 TCP, which for, it's important to know that unlike other contaminants, 123T is absorbable dermally and also through steam in the shower. It's a legacy pesticide that's no longer being used, but it's still working its way down through the soil substrate from the 70s. So this is a more challenging one because you can't really avoid it just with bottled water. When you're showering, it's dermal. If you're inhaling steam, it's affecting that as well. So there is a higher level of 123 TCP in this community than we've seen in northern parts of the valley. Other contaminants that we have found but in much lower levels are uranium and arsenic and another legacy pesticide called DDCP. So we are hoping to continue to do extended monitoring of the aquifer here in Merced. So I keep talking about the well testing and the bottled water, but we are also looking to talk to cities, counties, and all of these other like LACOs, all these other entities about long-term solutions, which include water infrastructure projects as well as searching for water alternative sources. And of course, as I'm sure everybody here knows, anything around water infrastructure is a very, very expensive project to fund. Valley Water has hired a lobbyist to go to DC and a lobbyist in Sacramento to petition for a bond measure or some other funding mechanism to try to ensure that all of these Central Valley communities that are affected by groundwater contamination will somehow have access to funding these larger-scale projects. I'll go through this one a little bit quicker, but we really don't, we, as an organization, our priority is to listen to the community first, to see what their priorities are and what kind of long-term solutions they would be interested in. We are working a lot on data-driven planning. Building partnerships with cities is going to be really important to this process as well, so I hope to stay in contact with you all. And then at the end of the day, our goal is to really facilitate projects by getting all the correct bodies in the room, because LACOs may not talk to the, you know, to CSDs and so on and so forth. So part of our role is going to be doing this. But what we do need help with still, and I'm hoping that this might be something that could be shared, is we need to help spread the word about this program, the free well testing and free bottled water program. So if you can share it in any way, that would be amazing. We also want to start hosting community meetings to talk about what the community wants to prioritize in terms of safe drinking water for everybody. And then we also are always looking for events that we can come table at to meet with public, with members of your community. I also have a bunch of yard signs that are in my car, if anybody wants to host one, I'd be happy to bring one out here. It looks like exactly like that. So yeah, you know, because this program is free, we have a lot of public skepticism because anything free is met with a pretty high level of distrust, like nothing is free. So if we can help get messaging from trusted offices and other entities, that really helps the public gain trust in this. So at the end of the day, you know, our whole goal right now is to help protect community health, enhance water infrastructure, and deliver clean water to everyone who needs it. Here's my contact information. If anybody has any follow-up or wants to, you know, have another meeting to go further into depth about groundwater contamination in Merced, I'd be happy to do so. If you're interested in terms of the funding of this program, you can look up the, we are funded through the Nitrate Control Program, which was established by the State Water Board in 2018. So all of, we are partners with all of the industry sectors that are permitted dischargers, being irrigated lands, dairy bovine, they are all paying into this program to provide that well testing and bottled water. And then we wrote a $5 million grant to the state for safer funding, which allows us to do the co-contaminant testing for 123T, arsenic, uranium, DDCP, and so on. So I'm just here to spread the word because we are new in your area and just trying to get as many people informed about this as possible. Oh yes, okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so, and I'm grateful for the city of Livingston participating in this program, so thank you. Yeah. That's, that's all I had. Anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Counsel, any questions at this time? Well, yes, can you step, can you come up to the podium, to the mic, please, and speak close to the mic so that people can, on the...
My voice is strong enough. I need a mic. I was just wondering, Delhi is in Merced County?
Yeah.
So have you done anything to notify the people out there?
Yeah, we've been flying in Delhi. We were looking for other events to table at in Delhi. If you know of any events that are open for people to table at in Delhi, please send them my way. And we can send some outreach staff to set up a table and inform people. Yeah, we, I would have to go into my spreadsheet to look and see where all of the different touchpoints have been, but Delhi is definitely on our radar and somewhere that we've...
And you're hitting, trying to hit all the other, like, crusty...
Siri, yeah.
No, not Siri, that's Sanoslos County.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
I'm talking Merced County, yeah, that's where I, but yes, all the little towns that are surrounding.
Yeah, all of those towns, we're essentially systematically trying to flyer all of those towns if they don't have events that we can actually physically table at. And then outside of that, we've been in contact with the Environmental Health Department, who is putting our information as resources on their website. I've met with Merced County Public Health Department to see if there's some cross-messaging that we could do with the Public Health Department.
One thing you might, might look into then is hitting the MAC boards.
I did, oh yes, thank you. I just finished doing a circuit of MACs for Stanislaw and I have the MAC circuit for Merced.
Good, okay.
I don't know if there's a community coordinator that gets involved with MACs as a whole for Merced County?
No.
Okay, so I'll have to reach out to each MAC individually.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys have great contact information for the MACs. I found it on a website somewhere and I'll be reaching out and doing presentations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just curious, how do you deliver like the results to...
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so we contract with local labs in each basin that are approved by the State Water Board. Essentially, when a person submits their application to us, which they can do over the phone or online, however they prefer, they'll submit their application, we'll screen their address to make sure that they are within our service area. If they are, we'll process the application and we'll get the contact information of the resident to a lab technician. The lab tech and the resident will schedule a time where the lab person can come to their well, tap the well, because they're not, they're not checking the water from a faucet, they're checking it directly at the wellhead. And then the lab takes that sample back. It takes about four weeks for the lab to do the full panel analysis and they send the results to Valley Water Collaborative. And then Valley Water essentially sends it and communicates with the tenant so that we can explain all of the results to people as they come out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
Yes, please, thank you.
I was curious, are you working with self-help enterprises?
That's, yeah, so we collaborate with self-help. Self-help is doing a lot on dry wells or wells that need repair. And so we don't have funding to deal with dry wells or well repair. So one of the things that we've been able to do with self-help, I mentioned that 123 TCP issue, which means that you would need to install a whole house filter, like a, whether it's RO or some kind of carbon filter to remove that. Self-help can help homeowners improve the health of their well so that those home filter systems that we have the money to install can be installed properly. So it is a collaborative effort, yeah. But we do have different spheres of work.
Yeah, I used to work with self-help.
Oh, really?
In water. And so we had to try to connect people to the city. And I know my neighbor, I have on a well.
Yeah.
And they already tested positive for nitrates and they're already getting bottled water.
Oh, really? Great.
So I want to get my well tested as well.
Well, yeah, you'll have to, yeah, just give us a call or...
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions in the chamber? Is there anyone on the phone?
So also, I just want to add really quick, if you would like to join us at the Sweet Potato Festival, have a little table there, we'll get your information, we'll give it to Jackie.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, sounds great. Okay.
That's the way to do it. Get them.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, just a simple question for Sarah is, and I'm sure our guys know the answer already, but when you mentioned those contaminants, TCP, nitrate and all that, we're all familiar with it in the city. Have they ever tested surface water to see if the contaminants still exist in surface water or just on groundwater? Does anybody know that answer?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim, so, so surface water, so when we, when we think about surface water, typically we look at, you know, river access or in certain locations, you have canals that, of water that's coming directly from some of the dams, not, not really the irrigation canals. So the presence of TCP is not, it deals more with turbidity and, and some of the chemicals that sometimes they use to, like copero sulfate when they, to kill a lot of the algae and stuff. So, so the answer is no.
Yeah, I kind of suspected that because you're never really going into the substrate, it's just, but it was more of a, just because Sarah was mentioning it, it got me thinking. And another thing, it's too bad you only provide filters to private wells, not municipalities. We'd be more than happy to get some filters from you guys.
Yeah, I, well, you know, we should start writing into the safer program and tell them we need money for that. That'd be great.
I think, I think that would be beneficial to you guys and everybody else, too.
Yeah, we've also, we have identified some small water systems that are failing, you know, and, and those are really in need of like carbon filters or other types of filtration. And at this time, yeah, it's a focus on domestic wells, but I agree with you that there is an obvious need for that. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. It's great useful information and I already have people asking me for the contact information and I already sent that out, so, but yeah, that's definitely, if we can have that slide shared with the council, so we can also share it in, on social media later.
Yeah, I can, I can get you a version for social media specifically with our flyer in English and Spanish.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll send that out.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, thanks so much.
All right, next we have item number two under awards and presentations, a presentation by Keith Myers, Director of Business Development, Well Rehabilitation and Preventive Maintenance with Aqua Freed and Aqua Guard. Welcome.
Mind if I sit here, is that all right? All right.
Just, yeah, just make sure you get the mic closer, yeah, there you go, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you for having me tonight. As you mentioned, my name's Keith Myers, I'm the Director of Business Development for Subsurface Technologies. Let me get this going, there we go. Subsurface has been around for over 40 years, working on wells, we've done over 8,000 rehabilitations. We started off in, in New York and then in the past five years, we transferred some licensees over to our own staff. So now we have an office in Rancho Cordova and currently we're working, as a matter of fact, in series today, this last week, in Delhi, they've, they're moving forward. But we offer two products, as you mentioned, Aqua Freed, which is a rehabilitation of water wells. And then in early 2000s, we see, we seen a lot of money being spent pulling wells and so that's when we invented Aqua Guard. I'd just like to show that, you know, you guys are not alone, you're not the first person to move forward with Subsurface, so as you can see, there's some of your neighbors on there. I still got to put some more in and we'll go over some case studies. So like I said, tonight, our focus on Aqua Freed and then, which is the, I like to say like freeing up the well, right? So rehabilitating once it gets plugged up. And then Aqua Guard is how do we protect that after we spend the money on the asset? And we'll talk about the benefits. So what is a well rehabilitation? Well, a well rehabilitation is to find restoring a well to its most efficient condition. And a general rule of thumb in the industry is, you know, rehab is about 10 to 20% of what a replacement cost will be. And then the Aqua Freed is about 10% of what a rehabilitation. And if you guys have any questions, please just stop me because I can talk two hours or I can talk 20 minutes, so. Fun fact about wells, you know, when they're brand new, that's when they're the most productive. And we know that they decline over time, not just with production, but also water quality, kind of like the TCP stuff. If you're pulling from multiple zones in a well, maybe the nitrates are higher and you're not pulling from that well or that aquifer as much, but you know, you want 1,500 gallons a minute. But what happens is it starts pulling from those upper zones, so you can see, start to see an increase in your contaminant. But we do know, you know, rehabilitation is necessary and that the traditional methods, they rarely return wells back to their original condition. So I like to show this chart just as a historic on, of a well life. I know it says 35 years and we know that they can go a lot longer, but you know, day one is where the star is and then, you know, 15 years down the road, you start seeing production loss, so you rehabilitate it, it brings it back up to its original production, say 1,500 gallons a minute. So you rehabilitated, it brings it back up to its original production, say 1,500 gallons a minute, specific capacity. But then we rehab it again, and then when we, on the second rehab, you're not going to rehab it as much, right? A lot of times the technology just hasn't been there, so it declines over time and then, uh, basically you retire the well and drill a new one. So what is Aqua Freed? We're gonna start with Aqua Freed. Does it have a laser on it by chance? I got one there. So I like to show this photo, this, uh, come on. There we go. I like to show this photo, this is inside a well. Uh, these blue are called silly beads, they go behind the, um, the screen on the well. But I like to show this because it's really good fidget, you can see that the water can clearly flow super easy through there, right? And I'll show you some other ones that you don't want your well to look like. But the traditional approaches of well rehabilitation, a lot has been chemical treatments. With, you know, sometimes pressure washing or what we call high jet, jetting, high jetting. And we know that the problem with those are is you gotta get it in these pore spaces. And, you know, at least with chemicals, it's the path of least resistance, right? And so the most effective way you can get is some sort of energy, some sort of kinetic energy. So over time you get mineral buildup, you know, biological buildup. These aren't your wells, thank goodness, uh, this is an open hole and then this is a wire wrap stainless steel screen. So some of the well problems that I'm sure Anthony has seen over time is well clogging, right? Lower production rates, loss of efficiency, all of a sudden you're paying more energy for the same amount of water. Like I said, the deterioration of water quality. And at the end of the day, we talk about sustainability, I know like a lot of the conferences I go to is sustainability, sustainability, you know, about our kids and stuff like that. And so what you don't want is over time is the loss of the investment. So here's a cheesy example, but I like to show is so many people focus on the interior of the water well, right? A lot of the plugging happens on the outside. So like I said, the energy, you gotta get some sort of energy to get out further into that formation. Uh, this is a well, in fact, I've seen these around here a lot. I think Fireball actually had one that I first met Anthony with that looked very similar to that. That's some iron and magnes buildup on them. This is, again, is the inside of the well, this is the outside. Are you guys familiar with the construction of a well a little bit? Okay, yes, no, somewhat? Just in simple terms, the inside, so they put a big metal casing in, right? They drill a big hole, they put in the metal casing and then they fill it with gravel, right? So that way the water can flow, gravel or silly beads, um, simple terms, just gravel, right? But over time, like I said, that builds up, so it starts to build up and build up and it can get, you know, it starts off soft in nature and then over time it starts to encrust and be really hard to remove. But when you use chemicals, you can see the path of least resistance, it's just gonna flow and work these areas. So we don't see a lot of increases and bringing it back to its original production. So that's where we, like I said, need some sort of energy. So now I'm gonna talk to you about kind of subsurface's approach to water rehabilitate, water well rehabilitation. We'll go through each one of these and I'll go quick, I promise. Uh, first thing, we always want to pump test a well, right? We want to know what your well is doing with your pump. We do a four-hour step test, um, we want to make sure that it's accurate. A lot of times we'll use an orifice plate on here, um, just to verify. Then we're gonna pull the pump, we're gonna video the well, we always want to pre-video. Um, there's been actually a couple of times where we found, uh, the, the previous contractor has left us like big brushes and I'll show you what one looks like, uh, that the city didn't even know that they had in there, so. But then we're gonna brush the well, right? And this is a nylon brush, uh, we use those on stainless steel screens, um, or we use a wire wrap brush. But you can imagine if that thing's down hole and nobody ever, uh, pulled them, that they left it there, so. Now we're gonna talk, this is where we bring in our technology. Uh, we are sole sourced, so we do a lot of, um, direct, uh, we don't have to go to bid a lot of times because we are sole source. But this is our typical rig here, um, this is a six-ton tank of CO2. It's half gas, half liquid, roughly. Um, and we do that for several reasons and I'll explain as the process goes. On the front of this here, we have a vaporizer so we can convert the liquid into gas. But the one thing I like to point out here is we got to modify the well in the beginning, so we seal it off, right? So that CO2, uh, which is the Aqua Freed and Aqua Guard, um, is injected into the well. And I'll go through the process, but we want to make sure that this is sealed so it's not going out to the atmosphere. So here, what are the benefits of CO2, right? Couple of things that I like to point out, it creates a mild acid, so that's good, right? It'll help get some of the harder scale, uh, remove that. It gets in the nooks and crannies and freeze pores, so it breaks fractures, kind of like when you have ice and it'll, you know, fracture. Um, it makes the water a little more slippery. But I think the biggest thing is when we go from the liquid to gas, and I'll explain the process, but it's got an expansion volume of 570 times. So if you can imagine, I have one bottle, water bottle here, right? All of a sudden it goes from, um, liquid to gas, now I have 570. If I had two of them, I'd have 1,100, right? So, and so on. The beauty of these, 100% environmentally friendly, so we're not using harsh chemicals. A lot of places we can dump this in the storm drain, that's all gonna depend on your guys' permits and stuff like that. But, uh, we don't have to worry about no neutralization of har, harsh chemicals, um, or creating, you know, mustard gas or anything like that. Uh, we use all NSF approved, um, uh, CO2, so I don't know if you guys are Coke guys or Dr. Pepper guys, but we use the same CO2 that they would use in, in, in your soda pop. And carbon storage, a lot of people like that, mostly on the industrial side because they can get carbon credits. Uh, we actually store carbon in the, in the formation. This is a packer, another way we isolate, we're able to isolate off a well and inject the CO2. I just like to show it, but we don't, usually we just seal it off, like I said. The biggest goal or the biggest, um, uh, one of the biggest factors is, is being able to seal that well so the seal, the CO2 has to go into the formation. Sorry, I got too many clickers over here, oops. Oh, come on. All right, so first we do, we install, like I said, we seal off the well and we put this injection line. Um, sometimes we have two, three injection lines or maybe just one, but we, we always inject it at the bottom of the screen. Uh, we start off with the lick, in the gas phase, so remember it's sealed off, off top, and then we inject CO2 in the gas phase to clear that pipe. Um, and it starts to build the pressure and so our operators can see like how well is this well gonna respond? Once that's clear and, and the gas and the water's out of this pipe, we switch over to the liquid. And once again, remember when I said, uh, when we inject the liquid, when it hits that, when it hits the water down below, that's when the expansion volume is going on, right? So now we're expanding that 570 times into the formation. The next step that we do, and this is very critical, is we spend a lot of time on airlift swabbing. And I'll show you what one looks like, but we use it basically in a, it blows air in and creates a vacuum sucking it out. But we do it in about a four-foot section, so if you can imagine, you know, going up and down, it's, it's pulling and pushing, uh, the water in and out and, and getting out what we loosened up with the CO2. Here's what one looks like, these are all specific to your well, so we make sure that the rubber seals are exactly the same size as your casing. So that way it creates that vacuum. And then we do the post-video. We like to do the post-video just so me and Anthony can talk about the next, uh, at the AWWA conference, how we improved Livingston's well. Or, or, and just to prove that we didn't leave a brush down there for you guys. But here's some photos of one, just using the Aqua Guard. You can see the before on the sa, on this side, you know, iron magnes buildup, this is after. But I think the really benefit that I like to show on this one is you can actually see that we're getting the penetration through the screen when you can see the different colors of sand, right? Then we install your pumping equipment and then we always want to do a post-test. Couple of case studies, uh, that I have here, one, this is Redding. We did this last year, about a year and a half ago, we're getting ready to do another one. This well is, like I said, sealed off, this is our injection line. We put another, um, uh, line that we can blow off if we need to. So a lot of people, I get a lot, is like, you guys create a lot of pressure. Well, we don't really, we create whatever your sta, we need a little more over static to be able to flow the liquid chlorine, but it's really differential pressure that's up top. So, uh, for example, we just did one up in Sacramento, for Sacramento County. That well was 15, 1,400 feet deep, uh, we had three injection lines in there. Um, we had to use about 500 PSI to push the liquid down and gas down into the well. But at the top is running around about 150, so not, not a lot of pressure. Keep getting confused on these. I just like to show this because one thing we always wanted to think about is what do we do with the water, right? Uh, when we, when we airlift it with that, with the, um, the mechanical swab, we're only doing about 300 gallons. But when we're pumping the well, if your well does 1,500 gallons, we're gonna want to push it, right? We want to make sure that we start thinking about what are we gonna do with this water? This double thing is. So the Redding well was interesting, they started off a, a well that did 1,500 GPM, uh, dropped down to 500 GPM. This well was built in the late 80s, um, so not super old. But they had a big, they had an engineering firm sample the water, send it off to a lab, had some sort of chemical concoction that came back with some well, um, chemical that they were gonna use. And, uh, they injected it, they swabbed it, they did all the brushing and these are the results from it. They brought it up to 600, go ahead.
I say, can you promise that these aren't AI-generated?
Yeah, I promise, I promise. Make my kids show me how to do that, first of all. But, uh, um, so yeah, so these are not AI-generated. But, uh, um, so after we pumped that, after they pumped us this well, it brought it up to 600 GPM. So only 100, 100 increase. So they hired us to come in, um, and we did the CO2 treatment. Uh, we didn't do all the processes and we didn't do the pump, we didn't do, we didn't physically do the pump test, so I can't show you, I'll show you a little bit of a different graph here. But as you can see, we were able to increase the well back up to the original 1,500 GPM with a 420% increase on the specific capacity. But one thing unique about this project was we actually improved the well better than when it was installed. So we increased the specific capacity by about 15%. And you like more water, right? A city of winters have been on our maintenance Aqua Guard, which I'll explain, but we did the Aqua Freed first. And they're, uh, thank God they didn't have their meeting today, they were supposed to, but they got pushed till next week, so I'll be able to be there. And then they're gonna add another one. So one thing that I like to point out is we don't want all your wells, we want to show you one well that we can, you know, with the proof's in the pudding. And then hopefully, you know, add wells to the program in the long-term asset, right, with the sustainability. Aerojet, I don't know if you guys are familiar, it's up in Rancho Cordova. Uh, we have 120 wells under our asset management program. But this one is unique, we actually were able to lower their operating costs significantly. Uh, long story short, is they have a bunch of these filters, a little bit bigger, um, at eight treatment sites. They had eight guys changing, they're like these big white socks that sit in there and they collect, um, you know, back in the day, they used to dump rocket fuel on the ground, so they thought that was a good idea. Um, so now they're pulling it out, treating it and then shoving it in the river. But, um, they used to have eight, they have eight plants and like I said, they have like, uh, they had eight guys run around changing these filters multiple times a day. Now they're down to three guys, three or four guys, and they don't change all of them every day. So just a significant increase. Plus their consumption of power has dropped significantly, be able to keep that production up. I like to show this chart, this is based on our New York office. Uh, this is over with 34 wells, with 19 wells where we had the pre-test that we did ourselves and the post-test. The black line shows no change, so after we did the rehabilitation. But you can see about 95 or 98% has seen significant increases, right? Some of them over here and I'll show you, but I know you guys are looking at these three at the bottom, like, hey, these didn't improve. Couple of things on those are unique is, one is they, all three of them were a biological problem, so they couldn't pass back T. But the other thing is, is they're like 30 or 40 gallons a minute per well, right? So if you drop two gallons, like you're, it's gonna show up below, like, makes sense? And then those, uh, that's the Redding case study. I took out the other one, I can put it later, but I was trying to be respectful of your time. So now I'm gonna talk to you about Aqua Guard. And I think in your staff report, we only have the Aqua Freed. But I wanted just to, uh, explain the Aqua Guard, um, and how we're gonna restore, you know, you've spent this money to restore this well. How do we keep it running at its top level, right? So here's that kind of similar chart, but this is, if we do the Aqua Guard and put it on the annual treatments, you know, we're just able to maintain at that optimum level, right? So it shouldn't decrease. And a rehab, you know, a typical rehab you're taking three, four weeks on the Aqua, on the Aqua Freed. On the Aqua Guard, you're talking about a rehab in three days, right? So we show up, we pump test the well, just like we did on the last one. Uh, we inject the CO2 or the Aqua Guard. Um, we let that sit for basically that day, come back the next day, we pump to waste, right? Um, and then the third day, we do another pump test and we, and we, and we demobilize and your well's back to Anthony, you know, running at optimum performance. One thing that I like to point out is we don't have to pull the pump. And that's why I like to really explain, when we do the Aqua Freed and modify the wellhead in the beginning, um, if you choose to do the Aqua Guard, the most cost-effective time is to do it in the beginning, right? Because, you know, if we do, if we do it later, then we gotta come back, we gotta pull the pump, we gotta install it, we gotta put the pump back. That's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of money extra that, you know, is, uh, that could cost a little bit more money. This is what a permanent install, so we install a permanent line down hole. Um, sometimes it's one, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's three, right? It's gonna depend on your well. I think I'll remember this well, it's not that deep, right? For, yeah, so we probably only have one injection line. But like I said, come by, inject, we don't have to pull anything, very slow and, and sustainable, right? We do have to modify the wellhead, this one had a pump pedestal like this, uh, that we modified. Um, this is not in California, so they don't require a pedestal on this well. But we had, we didn't know, but down here, there's two casings, right? So there's an outer casing and then the inner casing and there was no seal between the gravel pack, um, which is in between here. So we had to weld and, and modify that stuff. Uh, this is actually winters, winters, we had to bolt, bolt on a flange here, but then we had to modify the piping. So a lot of times we like to do the pedestal because it's easier and it keeps your spring line the level or your pipeline level, you don't have to modify that. Here's a submersible, you don't have any submersibles, all right? Oh, you're one. So this is what a submersible would look like where the pump's down below. And I took out a lot of them, but what's, what's the benefit, right? Oh, there's a lot, I mean, your energy costs go down significantly, right? Because you're keeping the water, or you're keeping the perforations open, right? So you just increase your specific capacity. Um, you know, shorter downtime for rehabilitation, lower maintenance costs. I know councils like predictive budgets, right? We like those. But at the end of the day, um, uh, it's really just in, uh, increasing in your sustainability of the life of that well. Couple of case studies, this is after with the Aqua Guard, so we did the Aqua Freed, we came back and did the Aqua Guard. This well over here, actually we do this well now twice a year, we used to do it once. Um, but as you can see, it'd fall off, so when we did our pump test, we had to stop because it was breaking suction. Um, but with the pump installed and not doing the surge block and all the other stuff, you can see we were able to bring that well back up. And not uncommon where we rehabilitate a well and years down the past, we start continuing doing the Aqua Guard and we start chipping away still at the, um, you know, biofaling or any kind of, um, mineralization. And you can see from this one, uh, the well gets better and better every year without having to pull the pump. Same with this one here. Uh, just two more slides, I like to show this just so people can see, but there's a pipe right here. This is gonna be injecting the, um, liquid CO2 in the liquid phase. And so you can see it's not very violent, it's like a washer machine or, you know, you fill up your soda. But you can see the particles floating around, um, without, you know, just by the agitation. But sometimes when we inject wells, um, like the one in Sac County, we injected for four days. So, you know, this is continuing to happen, right? It's continuing even after we leave, there's still movement going on. And that's all I have for you, so I know that was a lot, I usually do two hours on this, but I'm trying to. I can talk for eight hours, too, ask him.
The council will be happy to answer any questions that council may have. Uh, we do, uh, staff does have a, a staff report in the consent agenda for your consideration. That is the well nine rehabilitation. That is only for the Aqua Freed, that's correct.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
First, I want to thank Keith for coming out and presenting. Uh, council, I did have the opportunity to see this once already. Anthony, thank you for inviting me out and, and getting a look at this when we met. I believe I asked you this at our first meeting and I don't remember the answer off the top of my head right now. When it comes to measurables in terms of pre and post-testing, to what extent will you all do the groundwork and like essentially the legwork for those measurables versus our staff when it's time to go out and measure?
Yeah, that's a great question, so we. So we do, like I say, we do a pre-test before and after. So we check, you know, pumping levels, we check specific capacity, we check GPM. We also check for the CO2 and, and the pH, just as a preventative maintenance. We set a baseline in the beginning, and then we monitor that. And then we'll put all that into a report at the end, at the end of the project.
And that's all covered in your scope?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
And then, in your guys' proposal, if I'm, we're gonna inspect the pump and motor, right? Yeah, sorry.
Council, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I too got to see this presentation before, and, you know, I think it's a great product, and I think it would help us out. But I do have a question, how long would this extend the life of our wells? I know in the presentation, it said substantially, but timewise, years.
Who won the Powerball today? I don't know. I'm sorry, it's so hard to tell, right? Because it's subsurface, it's below ground, we can't touch it, we can't feel it. So it's really gonna depend on your well, and, but I can tell you, after doing over 8,000 wells, we've never damaged a well using CO2. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an aggressive in soft nature, if that makes sense.
That's good, thank you.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that the council understands that this well rehabilitation is, or the, the well itself, for the gravel pack, for the cleaning, and nothing mechanical in nature. We will inspect it to make sure, and then if something is out of the ordinary, then we'll come back.
Let's hope that doesn't happen, because, you know, it's, it's, anyways. Is there any questions in the, from, in the chambers? Is there any questions, anyone on the phone? Alright, council, any other last minute questions? Alright, well, well, thank you very much, that's a great presentation, and it's a, kinda, I, I did have some background information on that, and it's, it's, the visuals are very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, the one thing I'd really consider is, the Aqua Guard is taking a hard look at that. I know contractually, there were some, we're trying to, we were trying to iron that out, just based on, there are two projects, right? And we do a lot of our Aqua Guard under a standalone. That way, if you choose to do well 11, or well 13, you know, we do the rehabilitation, and then the Aqua Guard just goes automatically into that, into that, almost like an MSA, right? So there was, you know, that way it's clear and separate, right? There are two projects, and so I wanted to make sure. Because, like I said, you know, mobilizing a truck and our, you know, equipment to pull the pump, then install it, and then re-put it back in, would be very expensive.
Okay, go ahead, thank you. Next, we have county supervisor announcements and reports. He did text me earlier today, he apologized he was not gonna make it for personal family reasons. But he did send me a list of a few items that he wanted to share with the council and the community. He did attend, well, item number one, he attended the grand opening of Congressman Gray's new Merced office. It is located at 602 West 20th Street in Merced. If anyone needs to contact him, it is very nice having his presence in Merced. Item number two, he attended the swearing-in of Merced City Fire Chief Casey Wilson, and want to extend his congratulations and support to him. Item number three, he attended the swearing-in of six new Merced County custodial deputies in which stem success in their future careers. And number four, finally, he's looking forward to our tax sharing revenue meeting on September the 8th. And that was it for his report, I just wanted to share that. Next, we have announcements and reports, city staff announcements and reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to start with the police department. We'll be touching on the incident that happened on Friday, and also a traffic report, a traffic committee report.
Good. Good evening, council and members of the public. John Ramirez here, the interim chief of police. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the shooting that occurred this past Friday after the football game. So over the past three to four days, the Livingston Police Officers and Investigations Unit, along with Merced Sheriff's Department, have been working diligently behind the scenes. A lot of investigative work, a lot of leads and gathering information. During that time, they were able to discover a juvenile resident of Livingston was involved. And the search warrant and arrest warrants were served at a residence this morning. I can say that this morning, there was numerous Livingston Police Officers, along with Merced Sheriff's Department's investigative team doing surveillance. And with the help of the Merced SWAT team and their investigative unit, along with all the Livingston Police Officers, we were able to serve a warrant at a local residence and arrest the, one of the suspects in the case, who again is a juvenile. He was later booked into Merced Juvenile Hall on numerous felony charges. And I, I think at the time, I, at this time, I'd like to just recognize the work that Livingston Police Department officers and investigators, along with the Merced Sheriff's Department, and their assistance with SWAT team and their investigative unit, and just the collaboration and teamwork and diligence on this case over the last, again, three to four days. Again, I just wanna commend the men and women for doing that. Obviously, this case is very sensitive, and it's still in the works, there's still, still leads to investigate. We've had numerous citizens and others come in with some information, so that's still being looked into. So again, it is, it is an open investigation, so there's not really a lot of, a lot more information than what I, what I've given you that I can divulge at this time. But I'm open to any questions if, if you have any. And again, it's, it's still in the process, so I may not be able to answer probably most stuff.
Council, is there any, are there any questions at this time?
No questions, I just wanna thank chief and PD for handling the situation. Just got done coaching that night, had already gotten home, thankfully, before everything popped up, but, you know, I get to sleep through that stuff, you guys don't, and so appreciate the response, and, you know, taking care of stuff when nobody else does.
Thank you.
What I would like to share is, you know, we, we, we wanna acknowledge the support and the teamwork also with, with the educational institutions here in town. I know that Mr. Valades is here from, he's a board member for the Livingston Unified, or for the high school. So we, we've had, we've been in constant communication with both superintendents, some of the board members. And today, we actually had a Zoom meeting, our mayor was able to participate. And again, that's what it's all about, teamwork, working together, and looking at preventative, you know, measures, and continuing to educate over and over again, so thank you.
Also, you know, just, I mean, just to reiterate, reiterate what they have said, you know, just, I really appreciate the, all of the work that, all of the agent, involved agencies have been able to do since, since the night of the event. I know that, and, and the other community partners that have been able to participate in, and you also mentioned, you know, to the community residents that have, you know, shared information, whether it's, whether they might be related or not, you know, it's just, it's, it's good to see the community come together and support the efforts to be able to maintain the safety of the community. And, and thank you, thank you to all of the agencies involved, like, you know, Mr. Ramirez mentioned. I know that he's been involved in communication with, with all the, with, with you throughout the weekend, and Sheriff's Department, and superintendents. And this is something, I guess, also that we can use as a learning lesson to moving forward and, and providing, or looking into other, what other safety measures we can have, but also educational opportunities to, to do more gang awareness in the community, and other workshops, and so that we can partner up with the, with the different educational agencies in the community as well. And I know you have a lot of experience, and I'm sure you have others in the department that can, will continue to collaborate and participate in those potential educational workshops to be able to educate the community when it comes to gang awareness and other prevention methods that we can look at for safety.
Yes. Yeah, that is, that is something what we have been talking about, we just had, actually, kind of a coincidence, but in the last few weeks, we've had talks of, you know, getting back into the schools and, and, you know, getting that word spread, along with some of the grants that we're receiving. That's something we also wanna implement is the, you know, getting in the schools, getting with the parents, and, you know, especially at a younger age nowadays. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be key.
And then finally, he's going to touch bases, he's gonna give us, the traffic committee has been meeting, and so they have a few items that they would like to chat.
If I can just add something to, to the first item before we move on. And also for the council to kinda hopefully support, looking at some of the areas where we have, you know, I guess, where some groups congregate late at night, and, and I think that's also part of the, what creates this environment. But, you know, there's groups that congregate late at night at Memorial Park. You know, whether it's on the weekends or during the week. And something that I was mentioning to Mr. Ramirez was that, for us to consider looking at, and maybe this is an opportunity to add additional lighting. And I know that parks were, are supposed to be closed after sunset. But the reality is, we have a lot of different activities going on, you know, recreational, and, and it's also good, you know, for, for families to visit parks after dark. But if we could provide, or look into the possibility of adding additional lighting to the shelter area right next to the high school. And that could prevent a little bit of that, you know, continuous congregation of people there, or at least it would help, you know, for, for PD when they're driving by, so they can actually see, it's easy to see when someone's just hanging out there, and just be aware of, not that everybody will hang out there doing anything bad, but at least to have, just to know what's going on. So, you know, but I just wanted to add that, and possibly, hopefully, council can support something, some additional safety measures, and, you know, and it's all down to funding, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, I do agree that, you know, some lighting could help. But most importantly, as well as, if the public does see a large group gathering, to make sure that they notify us. At times, they tend to call, or they're afraid to call, or maybe they call a little bit too late, but, you know, at times, the officers do get busy. But we're never too busy responding, maybe it's a little bit later, but, yeah, we do encourage the public to call the non-emergency line, and you can also remain anonymous as well.
And, and to that point, I'm sorry, I'm just taking a little too long, but it just, it just reminded me about a couple of residents. One of them asked me, sent me a message about a week ago or so, and they asked like, to get information, how to reach out to you. And I gave him that information, and then this resident said, well, because I have a coworker that wants to call you, and thank you for, I forgot what the, what the word, what the text was, but it was just more to say thank you for something that PD had done. It was, I didn't get all the details, because, you know, they didn't wanna share them with me, you know, so, but hopefully, they, they did reach out to you. And then last week, another resident, actually a neighbor, called me and said, hey, you know, there's a group of kids, youth, smoking and loud music, and blah, blah, blah. And I called it in, and they responded within, like, very quick, very quick. And that was a good opportunity for them to provide educational opportunities to that group of four or five kids. They weren't able to drive their car home, you know, they had to, had to probably walk home, and they had, you know, probably somebody coming back at four o'clock in the morning and pick that up. But they did text me later, they said, they wanted to say thank you for the quick response, and not that anybody that goes to the park after dark does anything bad, but they were, you know, they were definitely not doing good things out there.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, we definitely double and triple encourage, especially if you're gonna send a shout-out to the police department, so thank you for that. So the next item I wanted to talk about just briefly again would be our traffic committee that we have. So this is something that's been kinda evolving over, over the last several years, and I kinda picked it up in the last two months. So currently, we are having meetings at least once a month right now. I think, Anthony, we've had three meetings, or we'll have our third, which will be the 10th of this month. The time will be posted by September 4th. And the meetings are here at City Hall. And some of the members of the, the current committee that we have is Sergeant Donald Cole from the police department. We have Mario Guebe, city engineer, Anthony Chavilla from Public Works. And we have a citizen as well, Hilda Lopez from the community. Any complaints at this, at this time can be either come in through the police department or Public Works. Again, Sergeant Donald Cole, the number for that is 209-394-7916. Or his email as well is letter D, his last name C-O-L-E@livingstonca.gov. So those are a couple of areas that they can reach out to, and then Anthony's email is on the website as well. Third way they can report is coming to an actual meeting. I know we had, I think, a couple at our last meeting that were kinda new, and they, they came with some, some concerns, and we kind of let them know how to, how to get that on the agenda for the next meeting, so I think that'll be coming up for the next one. And then I think we'll be working at this next meeting on, on actual approving a traffic calming program. We have a, something kind of in place, but we're kind of been reviewing it over the last two weeks to set that in place, then we'll bring it, bring it to council for a staff report resolution. Some of the issues just that we've, over the last couple meetings that we've had, that we've talked about is speeding motorists, reckless driving, crosswalk safety. And one of the big ones that we're getting a lot on is speed bumps and stop sign additions, which those can be a little bit tricky, but I know some of those have come in, and that's things that we've talked about in our meetings. And then the, just the goal of the program is to provide a combination of engineering, education, enforcement tools, to minimize these adverse effects, and provide a singular process which can be used by both city staff and residents alike to formally address these concerns. So that's, that's just a little quick update on the meetings that we've been having. If you have any questions or comments, feel free.
Council, any questions? I do have one question. I know you mentioned you guys have already met a couple of times, and this is gonna be the third time in a couple of weeks or so. Has there been any conversation in regards to having a meeting in the evening? Has there been any conversation in regards to having a meeting in the evening, like six or seven? I know that meetings are normally, or they, they have been around two o'clock or so. And if, I know, it is hard for people to attend sometimes, but, but I think we might have, provide also an opportunity, a good, good chance to provide, provide an opportunity for some folks that might be interested in attending, that could attend after work. And I know that sometimes I'm, you know, I don't want to keep you guys here late in the day, but, you know, if we do that once every now and then, you know, just something to think about so that we can provide that opportunity for others to be able to come in.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. I know, I know personally, I've attended one meeting, I think they had one before that, so I'm not sure if that was brought up, but I know, you know, thinking about it, it makes sense. Right now, we don't even have a real schedule that we're going to, I think we're trying to at least meet once a month, and then after that, it'll be as needed. But that's definitely a good point, and something we will consider, because it does make sense.
Yeah, and I, I saw the items on the, do you have that, the list, that, items on the list that you guys talked about with you?
Yeah, so, so the new one will be posted on, on the 4th, which is Thursday.
Okay.
At that point, the, the new items for the discussion on the 10th meeting will be on there.
And I know that, just for information to the residents, I know that most of the items that they, there's a couple of areas that they talked about, or they, that they reach out to me very often, which is Peach and Elmwood, Emerald and Peach and, and the intersection, and Robin and, you know, Lilac. And then just, just Peach in general, just cars speeding a lot on that area, and, but I just want to tell residents that it's not that we're not doing anything about it, but I, I mean, we are, or you guys are, you know, it's just, but most of these concerns are not things that are just done overnight. You know, it takes engineering, it takes studies, it takes data collection and stuff like that to be able to figure out what is the best option that you guys can come up with, and then figure out if it's doable or not. So not, you know, unfortunately, that's how government works, you know, but, and I know that sometimes it's, it's, you know, they, we always, we have things done overnight, but it's hard to do that.
Yeah, no, it, it is, it is tough, but I think, you know, one of the things that kind of I'm learning, getting in on this, is that all of us meeting together, we all have ideas and can share different parts of, you know, from the Police Department to the traffic side, to the engineer side, so I guess, you know, all of us getting together is going to accomplish more than if it was just me. So that's one of the things I've noticed, and kind of everybody seems to, to want to be there and really make a change. I know on the police side of things, I was showing some of the, some of the people on the, on the committee, one of our jammer systems, who I think we have got it approved about 18 months ago, and that's, that's a real good tool that we have to use. And I know we came up with the plan at this last meeting on some of the areas that we were having complaints on, speeding, and then putting it, putting it into action, you know, with radar trailers, and then having actual speed enforcement, and talking about roadway surveys and things like that. So it, it has been kind of an eye-opener for me, myself, but I think, you know, and then we'll, you'll be happy with what we come up with.
One last question, and I think I already know the answer, but, but I think it's important for people to know. Some have asked, well, why not put cameras and record who's speeding down the street or who doesn't do, you know, a stop sign or whatever? What are the pros and cons from your perspective? And, and if, you know, besides the cost, and they have to be monitored and all of that?
Yeah, so there, there is a pretty significant cost with that, but also being able to monitor, that's one of the, one of the tough things to do. Who's going to do that? And if there's going to be any kind of person who, when they do monitor, if somebody wants to contest it, like, what's the process going to be? So it is lengthy process. I know a lot of bigger cities went to that, and then they kind of went away from doing it. And some cities are still kind of trying to get back to it, but it, it can be a good thing. I think with the amount of traffic lights and signals and traffic we have here, it's going to be very cost, very costly for what we would get out of it. That's just my personal opinion. I think, I think we're heading in the right direction by, by starting this committee and kind of getting the talks, but, you know, that could come up in one of our conversations, and, you know, we can, we can look at that, and that's the whole point of this committee.
Yeah. Is there any questions? Anyone on the phone? Any questions here in the chamber? No, it's okay. No, it's okay.
But I do live on Peach. It's like, really like, what's the Witten Way? Literally, you hear people revving up, like, from like where Gala Park is, and just speeding 100% out. And then on Peach, it's very, very dangerous, and you have a lot, we're a very walking community, and a lot of folks walk there. So I have some thoughts about it, but I'll check in with you afterwards. But yeah, that's, it's really, really dangerous, and when you're trying to pull out of your driveway, people are just like going so, so fast. And sometimes trucks are there, and I don't think they're supposed to go, but sometimes, you know, folks poke, park their truck in their property, but sometimes you'll see like, you know, trucks going in there really fast, so it's just.
Yeah, I, I know that was, that is.
But thank you for, for the work you're doing.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Anybody else? Good. Next, we have City Manager announcements and reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. In, in, in line with what the chief was talking about, we did receive, this is our second letter that we received from Mr. Kualwant Singh, based out of Saint Ives Avenue here in Livingston. And so this is another item that we've actually been looking at, and I responded back via email, and I, I made sure that you guys were copied on that. But in essence, he's, him and a group of other individuals from the Newcastle area where the apartments are at, are requesting that we look at sidewalks and, you know, and crosswalks, you know, for those youth that are making their way to the high school. And so that is something that we're definitely have been looking at. And again, as we, as you mentioned, and some of my staff have mentioned, it involves a lot of different departments, and then it comes down also to, you know, funding, and for this particular one, also involves the right-of-way acquisition, and then also the alignment of, you know, the current existing sidewalks, you know, off of Peach, if you're going towards the, the apartment complex. But bottom line is, it is warranted, it is something that is, it's important, we appreciate him bringing it up. And so, you know, we're looking at, you know, federal, state, and local, regional funding to see how we might be able to tackle this. And more than likely, it'll just be one side, given the complexity of, of different right-of-way acquisitions and, and other elements, but just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive his communication and that we were going to, that I was going to mention it this evening. The other item that I wanted to talk about is, and this is an invitation to all the school board members, including Mr. Valdez, and the superintendents, folks from the, the health clinic, and just members in general. We're also going to be having a, a goal-setting envisioning session, and it's slated for the 23rd of September here in this facility. We do have a professional facilitator that's going to be here. And so, again, it's, it's informal, it's, it's folks to be able to communicate on a number of different topics, and it's going to feed to what PAS is going to be having and, and everything that we have here in town, because everything is intertwined. But we just, this is just another platform for recreation commissioners, for planning commissioners, and just folks in general in the council, okay? That's on the 23rd at 6 o'clock here. We'll be sending out a, a flower, we'll be posting it on our social media page and so forth. And then at a, at a later date, there'll be a little more in-depth communication from the fire services or Fire Ad Hoc Committee, but, you know, we, there's a lot of work that's been happening behind the scenes, and, you know, we have a, a meeting coming up with the county, and then we also, staff also had a, went to go visit High Tech, which is one of a, a manufacturer that produces fire trucks and other types of engines here in Oakdale. So at a later date, we'll, we'll give a more robust report on that. And that is all, Mayor, unless you guys have questions for me.
Council, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have conflict of interest declaration. Members of the City Council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Here and then, moving forward, item number three is just acknowledging that we have received and filed the, the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending July 31st, 2025.
And actually, item three is to receive and file the treasurer report for fiscal year ending July 31st, 2025.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Next, we have consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items shall be limited to three minutes per person, regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So we do have items three, four, no, I'm sorry, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 under consent agenda. Council, is there any changes, any questions, any comments on anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I request that we pull item nine and item 14 from consent.
Nine and 14? Okay, anything else, any other questions? All right, so then we have the rest under consent agenda. Is there any questions on, on the phone in regards to anything on the consent calendar? Anyone in the chamber closing the citizen comments at A42 for the consent agenda? Council, is there any motions?
I made the motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of nine and 14.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace. Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by about a 4-0.
So we pulled item nine and 14 for separate discussion. Item number nine, consideration over resolution approving the purchase of 13 solar light poles for Main Street, Mont Cliff Way, and Barcelona Drive in the amount of $74,627.00 as four zeros from Fonroche Lighting America. And then number two, to waive the formal bidding requirements as outlined in section one, 1116 and three, to authorize the city manager to execute all requirement, oh, I'm sorry, all required documents. Staff recommendation, approve, resolution.
Council, I believe Anthony has a presentation with a little bit more detail. Can we start there?
Okay.
Anthony Chavilla, Public Works. I do have just a quick PowerPoint, just so I could give Council a visual on the three different solar lighting projects. All right. So once again, Anthony Chavilla, Public Works. I do have a, a brief PowerPoint presentation to go over with Council and the public on the solar lighting projects. The first project is on Mont Cliff Way. This area has been reported as a poorly lit area over the last few years. Staff has increased the lumen output and installed brighter fixtures, but neither adjustments improve the area of concern. Both myself and Mario visited this area and did find a, a lack of infrastructure, lighting infrastructure in the area. There is a utility easement where the solar light poles can be installed. And here's a rendering from Fonroche Lighting. That is on Monte Cliff Way. That would be installing three solar light poles in that area. Another second project is Barcelona Drive. Public Works has notified that the area of Barcelona near Lilac was poorly illuminated, creating safety concerns. Residents advise that due to the poor lighting condition, their metal boxes have been broken into. There is a utility easement where light poles can be installed in this area. And again, both the, the city engineer and myself visited this area and did find a lack of lighting infrastructure in this area. And this would be installation of two solar lights. Main Street Lighting. Multiple residents have voiced safety concerns of a poor lighting on Main Street from D Street to Park. There are no streetlights on the east side of Main Street from D to Park. There are street light fixtures on the west side of Main Street. They're sporadic, they're, they're installed on some of the existing PG&E poles down Main Street. The rendering below is from Fonroche as well, with the, I believe it's eight, streetlights installed, but that doesn't take into account the current streetlights that are on the other side of the road. This area, again, the city engineer and myself walked this area. And the picture on top is where the lights would be located and installed. Here's what a typical solar streetlight with a galvanized pole, what it's going to look It's pretty much a standard pole. The only difference is the actual solar panels up on top with the, the storage, battery storage. battery storage. I also did just want to show counsel that they, Fonroche does have decorative solar lights as well. If in the future we want to look into putting up solar lights and walk paths. That's all, folks. Happy to answer any questions. I do have, we do have two representatives from Fonroche Lighting on the line for additional questions.
Counsel, are there any specific questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Anthony, first of all, thank you for the presentation. For the record, we did not ask for this. And so this was, Anthony, I think it would be good to present, which is really nice to see because the images in the staff report were not as bright and clear as what we just saw. There is at least one resident on Montcliff Way who I spoke to maybe just last week, week and a half ago, very frustrated about the lack of lighting, who'll be really happy to see this item come through. Counsel, for the record, I have no issue with using CDF funds or CFD funds to install solar lighting. The reason why I wanted to pull this item was related to the sole source language used for this contract. So we are, if we approve waiving formal bidding requirements with the sole source justification, the vendor provided their sole source letter at the end of the attachments for this staff report. And I went and I looked at our municipal code to see what criteria we use to qualify something to be considered sole source. And we really don't have any definition of what sole source is from my reading. If you, if staff or any other council members disagree with that, please let me know. But from what it looks like, we say sole source procurement must be adequately justified, but we don't specify what those justifications are. And so the conversation that I want to have is really about what counts as sole source and what doesn't. For this lighting item, the justification seems to be that these folks have the best quality batteries that can last up to 10 years and be functioning every night. And that's something that only they can provide, that nobody else can provide. But what specifically makes that sole source because of the quality? If we were to go out to bid, we'd probably receive bids from other folks that have solar lights. They may not be the same quality as these. You know what I mean? But it doesn't mean that these are the only people that make solar lights. And I think it's important for us to put that into formal language at some point. We know in our business that people see our budget and they want a piece of it. And nobody's going to give us reason to give them less money. I mean, every vendor has an incentive to say they are the sole source. And that doesn't mean that they're lying about it, per se, in every case. However, I've been working on different things with folks in other public agencies where they feel like they are getting, for lack of a better term, scammed by vendors. And I went and I looked at some of the contracts that these folks were proposing, and it's pretty clear that they were. After certain questions were asked, prices dropped by a lot. Nuances around what was sole source and what wasn't were brought up. And so while I don't have an issue with moving on this item tonight, I do think that we, as a group, need to figure this out at some point so that we make sure we are getting the best quality quotes and proposals from vendors. We're not limiting our sales by not going out to bid and that we're holding all vendors to the same standard. Because we don't want vendors coming back and saying, that was low quality sole source. This is high quality sole source. Process is important, as we all know, and that's something that I wanted to highlight as it pertains to this item. But aside from that, I appreciate staff identifying sites in town where folks expressed concern, brought something back that directly addresses those, and is giving us an opportunity to move forward with more lighting.
Quick comment. Thank you, Mr. RuPaul. You know, as the municipal code, it's a, it's a living, breathing document, and it's one that can always be enhanced. And, and you're right, you know, there's, there's, there's certain areas, like for instance, if we look at the, the section that talks about administrative citations for, you know, water usage, there's really no teeth in there. And so that's one, another area that we're going to be working on. And so I'm glad you, you brought this up. So we will work with legal to then present to council down the road. In addition to that, related specifically to this item, I know that the mayor had brought up another area that needed lighting as it relates to Memorial Park. But if there's some other areas that councils interested in, that we look at possibly getting a couple more lighting for, for another area, you know, there's, there's an opportunity here as well. So I just wanted to point that out in case there was any other area. And, and then for staff on the, for the actual lighting itself, to keep with the theme of, you know, the, the dark lighted poles that we have versus galvanized, you know, just wanted to, you know, point that out in terms of aesthetics and for, for the, for the areas that we're going to have. Try to match with what we have along Main Street. You know, we, we have dark poles and some of these other areas we have galvanized. So just, that was it, Mayor.
Thank you. And also thank you for bringing that up, about other areas that have been expressed. And actually, one of them, the Barcelona, I know that, I think I brought that up to staff. That was something, and probably I directed them to Public Works, you know. And once again, this was probably about a year ago, but it, you know, it does take time. But, you know, just we had to figure out also funding, where funding is going to come from, and what's the best way to approach the situation and stuff like that. But, but Mr. Ramirez, and now that you bring it up also, and actually, right next to Montcliff, I believe that's the, the street that ends at Gallo Park, right?
That's correct.
So the actual parking lot at Gallo Park, it's, or that side of the park where people are, when people are walking on the little...
The walk path?
Yeah, the walk path.
Parking lot?
Yeah, by the parking lot, it's pretty dark. And, and I, and there's still a lot of people that actually are working, are walking late at night, you know, but it would help. And then, and then like I mentioned earlier to you, that, that back area behind, or the, where the restrooms are, that corner area, it seems kind of dark also as well. That might be helpful just to consider. And then again, I don't know what that might look like, if it's something that is doable or is not, and, you know, while we're talking about lighting around town. And that is one of the things that I noticed, at least with one of the parks that I'm very familiar with, is that when some lighting was added, there was less, there was a good reduction of people hanging out. So that also helps PD, you know, because it reduces the number of calls that they have to be out there for. So, but, you know, those are just the two main areas that I have right now that I can think of. But once again, you know, people out in the community, please let us know, talk to council members or talk to Public Works or city staff and let us, let us know what those concerned areas are. So that once we are ready to move on on the next project or lighting project, we can just have those on the list. And then also, thinking about whenever subdivisions are built, and then again, I don't know what this, this might look like, if it's something that has to be, become an ordinance. When a new project is presented to, to, to the city, is it current ordinance, what the requirements are when it comes to the spacing of the light poles? Is that ordinance or is that, or is that, how do we decide? Like right now, I believe, you know, probably they're about 100, 150 feet separated from each other. And obviously, you know, that's probably where, how we get dark areas. And if the city wants to reduce that amount of space between light poles, is that...
I think Miguel's coming up. He'd be able to add a little bit of context there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel Galvez, Contract Planner. When it comes to development, like the subdivision, the city has adopted what is called a standard specifications. These are engineered drawings that set the standards, and those standards are applied. So we have the zoning code, but also we have the standard specifications that the city requires adherence to. So that would be laid out. I don't know, Mario or, you know, if there was... Thank you.
Yeah, so, so that is something that has to be changed at the city level, right?
Yes, any amendments to that would happen through the...
Okay.
Amendment of those standard specifications, which are approved by the city council.
All right. So if that is something that the council wants to address, then that needs to come to us as an agenda item. And then so we can have that conversation and look at it. That way we are being preventive rather than reactive, you know, 10 years down the road and stuff like that. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
The city does have standards and specifications. The standards give you a range. When you do a subdivision, then there's improvement plans that are submitted. Those have to be done according to the city's standards. City reviews those, and it's not a fixed distance from light to light. There's a fair amount of variation, but those are taken into consideration. And those can be updated all the time, you know, cities. Yours are fairly old overall, not just for this. So it would probably be nice to take a look at the whole thing, these being one of the items.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, I do. Oh, not from, not from Mr. Govea, but in relation to the item.
Okay, go ahead.
Anthony, do we still have the folks from the vendor on the line?
Jacob, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Testing.
Should have two, two gentlemen on the line.
Testing, can you hear me?
There's somebody talking.
Jacob, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Is the speaker on?
Can you hear me? Vic, can you hear me? I can hear you.
I think we can hear something.
How about...
That microphone?
Yeah.
Sting, 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 sting.
Yeah.
Is that, is that better?
Okay, can you try talking again? Jacob?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Can you hear him? Okay.
Testing.
We can just let it be.
Testing.
Can, can you hear, can you hear the council member ask a question, Jacob?
One more time, please.
Jacob, can you hear me?
Check. That's how we can hear you.
We can just let it be. Yeah? Jacob, can you hear me? Yes, perfect. Jacob, thanks for joining us at 9:00 PM on a Tuesday. Curious to know a little bit more about your guys' product and your reasoning for sole source justification. From my reading of what was provided in the staff report, it seems to me that two things that you all claim to offer that nobody else can offer are, one, a battery technology that has a lifespan greater than 10 years and also allows for the product to work every night, 365 days a year. And two, you guys seem to be able to put together this really cool network where you can track all the lights that are under your company and be able to monitor them and assess them if needed. Can you confirm if those two things are accurate? And if they are, what would you say the next best competitor can achieve relative to your, your company's product?
Heard, heard and understood. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
With you tonight?
My name is Jaleel Curtis. I work with Jake. I'm the vice president for Fonroche Lighting America.
We can, we can leave it. Jacob, can you give us one second, please? We tried giving it a run, but it looks like we're having some pretty large mic issues. I think we're just going to have to call it a night.
All right. Okay. So is there any additional questions? All right. So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any questions, anyone on the phone? Here and now, 906, coming back into the chamber. Is there any comments, any questions on item number nine in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to our dials, closing the citizen comments on 906. All right. Counsel, is there any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, if no one has any additional questions or comments, all motion to approve. I just want counsel to know that I'm always going to make sure that, to the best of our ability, we're getting quality at the best being for our buck. But I will motion to approve.
I will second it. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Paul, second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor? Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Item number 14, consideration of a resolution. One, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Loprest A Division of Water Remediation Technologies LLC for the total bid amount of $1,408,672 for the supply of green sand filtration equipment for arsenic treatment at well number eight A. And two, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Staff recommendation, approve resolution. Mr. RuPaul?
Yeah, thank you. I requested this item be pulled last time so that we could receive an itemized breakdown of costs from Loprest. As you guys know, in the initial quote that they provided, there was no detail on what made up the $1.4 million cost. It simply said, they are providing us equipment for $1.4 million. It does look like Loprest has come back and provided a little bit more description as to what exactly is making up this cost. To be 100% honest with you all, it's not up to my par compared to some of the other stuff we've gotten. I know that they were the only bidder for this item, and that makes things a little bit more difficult on our end as well as the timeline that was put in place to get these details. But again, to reiterate, I think our process matters a lot when we are vetting these vendors. Nobody's going to come in and try to give us discounts. You know, the more we push and the more that we specify what we're looking for, the better chance we have of getting quality products at the best price possible. And I think if you go talk to any resident out in the community, that's exactly what they would be wanting us to do. And I think if you go talk to any resident out in the community, that's exactly what they would be wanting us to do. Specifically as it relates to this item, and this is just something to think about going forward. In their itemized quote that they provided, it's on page 322 of your staff report, one of the items that they listed in the quote is the bond. And they're specifically referring to their bid bond, which would turn into our performance bond. Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, in that assessment. And I found it funny that this was listed as one of the costs that we're expected to pay for because this is what we are requiring the vendor to pay to assurety, to make sure that if something goes wrong in this operation, that we get covered. This is essentially our insurance coverage, the bond that they pay for. This is something that if I knew it was included in a quote, I would never want the city to pay for it. I would hope that it'd get negotiated out. As we know with any vendor, they have costs of doing business and so they're gonna wanna cover those costs when they charge us. They have expenses and they wanna make revenue. I completely understand that. It's just sometimes if you know you're paying for something that you didn't expect to be paying for, you probably wouldn't wanna do it. When you go and you give an extra donation at a fast food restaurant or even a grocery store, you're thinking, hey, I'll top off and round the dollar. But if you know that they're gonna get a tax credit when you could've just donated that money yourself, now you maybe, you may not be as inclined to do that. And I think this is one of those situations where if we didn't know that they were itemizing the bond, we'd probably just be like, sure, we'll pay what they're asking for us to pay. But given that it's in there, it's something that I don't think we should directly be paying for after they highlighted it. And I'm still uncomfortable with the way this is presented. I'm not gonna ask council to wait if they don't want to. You all are more than welcome to move forward on this item tonight. If you think that's the direction we need to go, I just wanted to express my concern with the level of detail provided as well as at least one of the items that's included in the bid.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. We, I super appreciate, you know, all the comments that you made. And one of the things that I do wanna communicate is whether somebody lists, lists the, specifically about, you know, the bond, we're paying for it whether it's listed or not. These individuals are actually putting it forward, others just basically hide it in their cost and we end up paying for it one way or in the other. As it relates to this specific one, so think about it. When you, we, I talked about it at the last council meeting where we talked about goods and services. We talked about construction, there's different categories. And so if, if, if somebody's gonna list everything out, then they are also go- and again, I'm, I'm all for openness, transparency, being able to provide every single detail. But there's particular projects where if they list everything up and, and, and line item by line item, they, they could be giving up some of their own proprietary secrets, you know, in terms of how they are, you know, competing against a certain project. Unfortunately, this is, this was, we only received one bid in this particular case. But they're not gonna give us more detail than what they, they've provided us at this point in time. And as much as I would like to go back and ask them for that extra detail, they're not gonna provide it for some of the reasons that I'm just mentioning. And, and then in addition, in addition to all of this, we, you know, we, we try to do our best in terms of trying to get as many bidders. And in this particular case, there is very few and far between folks, especially here in the Central Valley, that can do this line of work. And so because of some of the, well, council last year, you know, wanted to spend this money in this particular fashion and so that's why we, we, we're bringing it to you and, and, but it's up to council what, what council decides. I don't know if anybody else wants to share anything, but that's all I have.
No, I really appreciate that context. And again, I love the intention of what the money's being spent for. Huge priority for the community and for us as a council. I just, I'm, I'm going to continue drilling on this piece throughout my time here, however long that lasts, that I want us to get the best being for our buck. Staff and Mr. Mayor, please confirm, it sounds like you are fully comfortable with the quote that's provided?
Let me just add one other thing. If you had all that information, Mr. Paul, how would you use that? And how, where would you compare it to and with who would you compare that? To then be able to say, we're not getting the best bang for our buck. I'm, I'm just throwing that
Yeah.
in terms of, if we had all that information right now, would you punch it in to an AI model to see if it's gonna come out? There's so many different nuances. And so all I'm trying to say is that I understand where you're coming from and I'm, I'm protecting my staff by communicate because I, you, you're a new council member, you're championing this. I love what you're doing, but I'm also trying to balance the other side because they're doing everything that they can and they always have and keep in mind what the best interest of the city. So again, not to attack you, not to attack anybody else, I'm just trying to balance the, the, the outcome here. And so we, we will do, and I, on my end, whatever we can to provide the most data for you guys to be able to make the best decision.
Definitely. For the record, I don't think there's any shortcoming on staff's side here. All we can do is request information from Loprest, which is exactly what you guys did. I'll also acknowledge that I'm not the expert in this situation. You all are. And so it's my intention that this information comes out to the best ability that we have so that the experts can look at it and say, hey, we do think this is a fair assessment. We think that the costs that they broke down are relatively legitimate based on what they're providing us, which is why I asked that last question of, do we feel comfortable with the quote? As for my side, I did try to, try to vet some of the vendors that Loprest included in their references. So two of them were $1.5 million deals, which is similar to what we're putting out. One of them was only $500,000, so I didn't think it would be as similar to the point where we needed to compare. I called one of the references. The gentleman who did those services has retired. His services hasn't, have been put into another company. That lead didn't get anywhere. I called another district that Loprest worked with to see if I could get quotes that they got from other bidders. I didn't find this in any of their agendas. I still have yet to hear back from their staff. But on my side, what I would wanna do is at least get a gauge what other bids look like for similar services and then compare to that side. But again, and Mr. Mayor, that's why I asked that last question about staff. If you are comfortable with the quote that they represented and you think this is a decent bang for our buck, then I will leave it to that, to that opinion because at the end of the day, I'm not as informed on this stuff as you all are.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Yes, I, I am comfortable with my staff and the information that was been provided. And again, our goal is to always do, you know, better. And are we perfect? No. So, I, again, I want, I wanna make sure that, that you, that I convey that I appreciate your comments. I'd rather be on my tippy toes than, than not. And so this type of information, make sure that my staff and myself included are always on the cutting edge, on, on top of our game. And so in no way am I dissuading, asking questions. This is great feedback. And so I'm just trying to bring a little bit of balance, you know, in all aspects, you know, in terms of council's participation, you know, what, what they can do not only in the council chambers but also outside of council chambers. You know, how deep can, you know, can they talk to vendors? How much, how much information and what kind of information they can get from vendors? Again, so that we can have, you know, a gross, a good balance in all areas. So thank you, Mr. Paul.
Definitely. And I wanna reiterate for the record, I have zero concerns with work that staff did as it comes to giving this information. You requested what I asked for, you got what you got. My question is simply if we're okay with the price that they charged us at, to make sure that we feel like it's a fair deal. But I appreciate that context.
Counsel, any other questions? So with no further questions, I will consider, did I? Alright, so at 919, I will go out for public comment. Is there any citizen comments? Anyone on the phone in regards to this item? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any comments or questions in the chamber?
Hello, Mr. Paul, great job, man. Keep it up, keep asking the questions. Even, even if staff is doing the correct stuff, you gotta ask the questions. Make sure that the city is getting the best services for the, for the money. Keep it up.
Thank you. Any additional citizen questions in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 920. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt the resolution, accepting the bid and award the contract to Loprest Divisional Water Remediation Technology LLC for the total bid amount of $1,408,672 for supply of green sand filtration equipment for arsenic treatment of well number eight A and authorize city manager to execute the supply of green sand equipment agreement.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by council member Roth, roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Roth.
Yes.
Council member Paul.
Yes.
Councilman, Mayor for Tim Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Next, we have public, public hearing, item number 15. Ordinance amending Livingston Municipal Code Title V, Chapter 3, Chapter 4, Chapter 6, and Chapter 7 related to various development standards, site plan and design review procedures, definitions, and commercial zoning matrix. Staff recommendation, waive first reading, open and close public hearing, and approve ordinance by title only.
Miguel?
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the audience. Miguel Galvez, contract city planner for City of Livingston. As the city manager mentioned earlier, the meeting code is a livable, breathable, breathable document. It's always changing, evolving, and the zoning code is no different from that. As a land use planner, I consult the zoning ordinance on a daily basis that sets the rules and regulations on how property is gonna be developed. On my short tenure here with the city, staff has identified, recommended amendments to the zoning code and those will be presented this evening. The items generically are four general items. One is development standards. Two is a review approval process. Three is the definitions. And fourth is our zoning matrix. In the ordinance that's attached, any additional language is under, underlined text. Any language that is being deleted or diagrams that are being removed are strike out or cross out. In that type of fashion. So let me begin here real quick. This is formerly zoning ordinance text amendment 2022-02, which is a staff initiated proposal to amend certain parts of the Livingston Municipal Code. I summarize them here by general categories. The first amendment has to do with lot development standards. We're recommending that we add a minimum corner side yard setback at 15 feet for properties that are zone residential. We're looking at revising the second floor aerial ratio from 15 feet to 20 feet for properties in the R1 zone. We're looking at revising the side and rear yard setbacks in the R1 zone from 10 feet to five feet. And we're looking at adding setbacks for front yards, side loaded garages, and rear yard car patios. This is reflected on table eight. And the one that is, I'll just point out some of these. The one that's of interest is the R1 right now, for a long time actually. If you're in the R1 zone, the lots were required to have a 10-foot side yard on each side. There are many lots that have been developed that do not comply that, with that, they are five feet. So this is kind of a cleanup item that'll bring a lot of the properties into, into conformance. But quite frankly, as the city is looking at becoming more efficient in the lots that it creates and the use of the land, it makes sense to have a smaller side yard, which is pretty much standard throughout the state, a five-foot side yard setback, and so that's one amendment. And as I mentioned, here's the, the setbacks that are being amended here. They're underlined for 15-foot or corner lots. And then the second story, here are the setbacks for that. So that's one of the standards that's being amended. The second one has to do with the off-street parking requirements. The current zoning code has some, I'll say stale or outdated diagrams and we're looking at removing those. We like to make those consistent with the city's adopted standard specifications that are produced by the, our city engineer. This will allow consistency. Here's a standard that's in our standard specifications. So we're looking at incorporating that standard and each of these have certain letter references that specify what the minimum dimensions are. You can see B, C, and so in our standard specifications, those are very precise. And our certain coding, in our zoning standards, those are not, they're kind of like drawings and this will greatly improve that. So here are the different measurements that will be incorporated as part of the zoning code. So that is what development standards regarding parking lots. The site planned and design review process, we're looking at recommending that that go to the planning commission. Actually, the site planned and design review application apparently, presently goes before both the planning commission and city council. Staff is recommending that the planning commission be the, the proven authority and not go to the city council. Any items that, I should say, any site planned and design review applications that are approved, but they're not favorable, people can appeal them to the city council. So that is an item. Part of the reason for this recommendation is, is one, when we take it to the city council as well, it adds time and two, it adds expense. So we wanna be more efficient and be more economical in terms of, you know, the cost that is charged to the applicant. So that's one, one reason for the site design review that would be limited to planning commission final approval unless this appeal to the city council. The other item that we're talking about is we're looking at making amendments to the site plan and design review regarding what is considered significant exterior alterations. The code says, hey, if you're gonna have an existing building, you're gonna make alterations that may or may not require an item to go to the planning commission. And so we have some percentages in, in the new definition that addresses, if you're increasing the height of the building by more than 15%, if you're looking at making some facade improvements that exceed 40% or change the material 40%, then that we're concerned that as significant alteration that should get a planning commission review and approval. So that adds some clarification. We've added some language to address irregular shaped lots. And as I mentioned, significant exterior alterations to, I should say, existing structures. Irregular shaped lots are usually those that are in cul-de-sacs. They might be a corner lot, they might be lots that are through lots, they're weird shape. And we have some more definitive language how those lots should be addressed in the, in the proposed code. The last area is in our land use zoning matrix. So when someone comes up and say, I have property R1 zone or C3 zone, is this used permitted? We have social halls that are not necessarily, are not addressed and so we're proposing that social halls be added as a conditional use permit in the C1, C2, downtown commercial, and one in P, open space, parking open space zoning districts. So they would be allowed subject to a So they would be allowed subject to a use permit. The benefit with a use permit is that any type of use that is permitted can continue to do so. There's performance measures, and if they fail those performance measures, then the use permit can be taken away. It can be revoked, to be precise. The other is amend the office, I mean, amend the office professional business medical use to be permitted in the C3 zone. So right now, if it's not listed as a permitted zone, it's prohibited. So in the C3 zone, we like to make sure that offices, professional business and medical uses can be permitted in the C3 zoning district. With all type of amendments to our zoning code, we always make sure that we look at our general plan to make sure it's consistent, and these are the policies and objectives we found that would lend themselves to support the proposed amendments of the zoning code there in the staff report as well. The proposed zoning code amendment is considered exempt because it's more of an administrative matter, will not result in a direct construction of a project. Any future project or development will have their own separate environment review. So we consider this to be exempt from CEQA under the general provisions there. In terms of public notice, the public notice was published in the Mercedes Sunstar on August 8, August 15. We are required to provide a minimum of 20-day review period. Staff has not received any public comments on the proposed ordinance amendment. We did take this back to the planning commission back in 2022. The planning commission on a vote of 3, 0 approved a resolution to recommend approval of the proposed zoning ordinance being presented to you tonight here to the city council. Staff's recommendation is to waive the first reading, open and close the public hearing, adopt the ordinance by title, approving the zoning ordinance text amendment to update the various development standards, the zoning definitions, and certain commercial uses in the zoning matrix table of the Livingston Municipal Code. With that, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to respond to questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time? I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure who. Miguel, can you go back to, well, first, I think it's the previous slide. Let's see.
Which one?
So there's a couple of dates. No, just, no, just.
The one with the, that one?
No. Go forward. Hold on, let's see. Right, hold on. Right, go back, go back one.
Sorry.
Yeah, right there. So I understand, you know, part of the reasoning behind it is just, and I think it's something that we've been trying to work on to make the process more streamlined, right? And in doing so, and in doing so, there would be some money savings also as well. And with everything, there's pros and cons. So you mentioned the pros. What would be the cons that can come to mind if this part of the process no longer comes to the council?
I guess the cons is from the city council's perspective, you won't necessarily have the review, the oversight of that. And so I know some of the council members would be interested in maintaining that. I suspect some of them will say, hey, you know what? I would like to review it in detail and provide comment on that. I want to make some change. Do I have to go to the planning commission? Do I have to talk to staff about making changes? You know, if I want to propose something, I may be, my ability to make those changes might be foreclosed, and I don't have that ability. For the most part, items that are approved under site planned design review are uses that are permitted and meet design standards and, you know, when staff reviews those two and presents those to the planning commission, we get comments from them, and they're conducted in a public hearing. But if the council wants to remain directly involved, you know, they won't have that ability to do that, and so that is a strong con. If the council wants to maintain that, I think that, you know, we can move forward with this zoning code amendment without that requirement. We're just throwing that as an option to make it more, as you say, streamlined, more cost efficient.
Mr. Mayor, if I might supplement. So through adopting the design standards, that's the city council expressing its policy preferences. So basically, from the top level, the council would say, yes, we think the setbacks should be, you know, X instead of Y. And beyond that, when an applicant files an application, staff would review it, and they would confirm that, yes, this does match the development standards. And I'll add too, that the practice of letting the planning commission review and approve those applications is consistent with other cities. And yet another point is, if an applicant disagrees with the planning commission's determination, as the city planner pointed out, they could always appeal up to the city council. So it wouldn't be the end of the road for that particular applicant.
Good, thank you. So with that, I have a question. So normally, right now, council members cannot go to a planning commission meeting and provide comments because that item will be eventually coming to city council, right? If, yeah, we're not supposed to be providing comments on an item that is going to come to council because what that means, where our council will be influencing the decision of the planning commissioners. I know that in the past, there's been individuals that have maybe knowingly or unknowingly provided comments to council, I mean, I'm sorry, to planning commission. But my question goes to, if the process ends at the planning commission and they approve it, can the council then provide comments? Because it's like an extra additional set of eyes. Would that take the, would that take, would that be able to change? Because now that is not coming to city council. So it would take that away as, or can we still have the, or can council have the opportunity to provide comment at that time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't have this answer at the top of my head right now, but sometimes cities will have a call-up ordinance, something that gives the council the opportunity to, you know, kind of pluck a planning commission item out and kick it up to the city council level for further review, even if no one else is appealing that decision.
Mr. Mayor, we have done that in the past.
Done what?
Where planning commission didn't need to come to the council, and they approved it, and a council member went in and pulled it and brought it to the council for discussion. It has been done in the past. I can't remember the last time we did it, but it has been done.
So were you saying that the process was different a while back to where the planning commission had the final say in, and then it would never come to the council?
No, if I recall correctly, and you know, and I'll have to do a little more research, there was some, I don't know, it was one or a couple of times, I can't remember the exact number, where something didn't have to come to the council, and the planning commission approved it, and one of the question, council members questioned it, brought the item for discussion to the council. So basically, even though they approved it, they held it until the council weighed in on it.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I always like to go to the extreme and look at the worst-case scenarios, you know? Because if there's something that the planning commission doesn't see that somebody else does see, you know, once it's approved, it's approved. But, you know, I do agree with that we should have a more streamlined and find ways to streamline it as best as possible, and that would reduce the amount of time that people have to wait to get their projects built and stuff like that. But at the same time, I'm also thinking of the worst-case scenario, and how can we have safeguards in place, you know, in case that it happens or is needed? So just something that I wanted to throw out, unless you have some additional information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Looks like section 5-6-12-6 regarding appeals. Subsection A allows any person dissatisfied with any action of the Director of Community Development Department to appeal it to the planning commission. Subsection B allows any person dissatisfied with any action of the planning commission to appeal it to the city council level.
Not bad for the old man memory, is it?
So just to be clear, so for instance, so let's say that we look at the scenario where the planning commission, you know, is the final decision maker, they approve something, and then someone in the council sees something that they don't agree with or that we believe should have a second look, then that's what you mean, that the council can pull it and bring it?
Yeah, any council member can pull the item and then agendize it to the city council meeting, then discussion can be had.
So then, the only question left for me is, can council members participate in providing? Just for clarification, if the item is not going to come to council no more?
So hypothetically speaking, there's, depending on the item, right? Because there's different reviewing bodies depending on what the action is, but I would recommend against any council member prejudging a particular issue or expressing a strong opinion because when you are the reviewing body, you should keep an open mind to review all the evidence in front of you, relying on staff reports or public comment, things like that. So again, I would caution against arriving with any preconceived notions or prejudice or bias.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, leading counsel is absolutely correct. The way it was explained to us years and years ago is that we should not get involved in deliberation of the planning commission because we're still the overseeing body. And then also, say that you go in, a council member goes and participates, applicant is denied, an applicant appeals to the council, now we've already stated your opinion. So it was always, we were always advised, if you wish to attend, you can attend, but just don't comment.
Got it. No, I mean, I just wanted to put that out there for clarification because it seems like for years, that has not always been cleared. Can you go forward? One more. In this section, you mentioned social halls. What constitutes, what would be considered a social hall? I mean, I think I really know the answer, but just to be clear.
In its simplest terms, social halls are places of public assembly that are often used like for venues you can rent out, you can have band music, dinners, banquets, things like that. There's a lot of issues associated with social halls that people may see as a concern, you know, loud music, impacts to parking, which is the hours of operation. And so I think when you have something that's allowed under a use permit, you have the ability to enact performance measures that, you know what, if you continue to adhere to the cities, whether it's noise ordinance or we have specific performance standards regarding hours of operation, whatever, if they are violated, then we can move to revoke that use permit, and they lose that ability. So it's a way to make sure that people are adhering to the regulations that are approved for that.
So, and then to be specific and be clear, so I guess what you're saying is, this would only refer to like rental social halls and not necessarily a social hall where they're going to be selling liquor or it's going to be like an open business every day of the week?
Yes, a social hall is not like a bar or anything like that. It's more like a venue. I'm thinking about a dance hall or a community center or something like that.
Go ahead.
Because people sometimes buy vacant buildings and, you know, they convert it to a venue where you can have these public assembly uses there.
All right, thank you. Can you go forward? One more. One more. One more. So you mentioned that this was approved by the planning commission. I think there's a couple of dates. Here you refer to December 13, 2022, and in the report, I think there's a date of, but anyways, it's November 8, 2022. So it's probably two different dates. One was reviewed first and then probably approved later in the December 13, 2022. But my question is, if that was, what happened? Why it took so long to, for council to see it or to come before the council since it's been almost like three and a half years? Was there something else that, or what happened? Just, it was?
We had scheduled this item to come to the city council. The city manager at that time said no, that this was not to go forward.
Okay.
And so we were just following direction.
All right. That answers the question. Okay. All right.
Now they're following direction.
And then just, this is just for future reference. In the report, there's some, what we call red line, right? Where we cross out certain areas, sections that we're taking out or deleting from the current ordinance, and it's easy for us to follow because it's crossed out. But some of the, what's supposed to be red line is black line. So just for future reference, if we can just, instead of being black lines, so we can just make it all red because it's easier to catch. Because sometimes when we have like a full half, you know, like this, this agenda is like for over 400, 400 pages, it's just easier for us to, I mean, I like to, I don't like to read, but I have to read sometimes. It's just for future reference, yeah, just red line, keep it red. And I think that's all I have. Please, thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Want to confirm what this appeal process is going to look like. So the applicant themselves have the right to appeal. It sounds like council, even though they're not supposed to do it at a planning commission meeting, we would have an avenue to bring this back as an item to appeal. What a member of a public, what a member of the public, sorry, not a public, the public, have the right to appeal?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And it didn't seem super fleshed out, but do we know if there's going to be like a cost for that? Simple application, would there have to be a fee that's filed?
Yes, there's an appeal fee, and that's used to pay for staff time and items preparation of the agenda report, that type of stuff. So there's a filing fee for submitting appeals.
Yeah, unless you're a council member, then the fee is waived.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Miguel, thank you very much. You know, one thing I've always been confused about over the years, and I've been confused about a lot of things, but on the setbacks, say that somebody built a house, they have it, and they comply with the setbacks that they have. Suppose they want to come in later and add a patio. How does that affect your setbacks?
Typically, when you, when an applicant or proprietor wants to build a patio, they take out a building permit, and we review setback for compliance. If they come in, if they build it without our review, then it becomes a court enforcement issue. But typically, we won't allow construction of projects that are encroaching to the setback.
So if we're going to revise the setbacks from 10 to 16... to revise the setbacks from 10 to 5 feet, correct?
Yes.
And if somebody wants to put a four foot patio, they can no longer comply because that only leaves a one foot, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just want everybody to understand that part. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Miguel, there's been a lot of talk, as you know. We've actually received quite a few emails and phone calls from, you know, neighbors talking about, you know, ADUs and that they were upset because they were, they didn't receive any, you know, a formal communication that there was going to be an ADU. And so if you can talk to council a little bit about, you know, how these setbacks work with ADUs or do not work with ADUs in order to, you know, educate the public a little bit more on that?
I would be happy to do that. We get, I get questions on that all the time as well. So an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit is permitted use in all the residential zoning districts, even in the downtown commercial that has residential uses. Someone wants to develop a second unit, it can be connected, it can be part of the house, a junior ADU. It can be attached, connected to the existing house. That's a, and it can be detached, ADU. When it comes to setback, the zoning code requires that ADUs have a minimum setback of four feet from the side and rear property lines and 20 feet from the front yard property line. Now, since it's a permitted use, that does not require a planning commission review and approval. It's just like, I want to build, you know, I want to enlarge my house. As long as I meet the zoning standards, I can do that. And so people will call, say, hey, I didn't get notice that, you know, my neighbor's putting a second unit. How come I wasn't notified? And all this is provisions that were enacted by the state of California. And so we're carrying out the state of California's rules and regulations. If we had the option, we would probably have some provisions. But the state is interested in facilitating the development of more housing in the state. And so ADUs are one way to do that. And they try to identify ways to reduce what they call the NIMBYism, you know, not in my backyard, literally. So yeah, residents call and say, you know what? I don't like it and, you know, I don't want those people that close to me. What can I do? It's like, well, you know, even if the city went to amend its zoning code, we're handcuffed, if you will, by state law, which overrules us.
Thank you. So you also mentioned 20 feet, 20 feet from, in the front, from the property line.
Yes.
Right? Some cities are moving or considering some areas or, you know, or to getting rid of front yards, grass areas, because not only do they take a lot of water, sprinklers, maintenance, landscaping and blah, 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 right? So, and then what they're doing is instead of having landscaping, they're using that additional space as, you know, to build another bedroom in that area. If that was an interest for the city of Livingston, what would be the process to change that? I'm not saying that we are, but I'm just, I'm just asking, what would be the process?
There's a couple of ways to do that. One is through the zoning ordinance text payment. Another way would be if you have a, like a brand new subdivision or a new development that's like townhomes or something. You can do it through a special zoning, like a planned development zone. So that establishes specific development standards for that property. You might say, oh, for this area, it's a planned development for, I'll just say townhomes. And we want to make sure that we get the maximum use of that area. And so instead of relying on the 20 foot setback and the generic R1, R2, R3 zoning standards, we will approve, I'll just say a 10 foot front yard setback. And so you can use that for the garage or any part of the structure. So you can do that through many of the zoning code throughout all the residential districts or allowing someone to propose something through a plan development. And that's a rezone application that goes from like R1 to PED. And you establish the development standards for that. Both ways are effective with the plan development zone. That's a good tool that the city can, can use. It's helpful because you get to provide some flexibility on how the property develops. You don't necessarily have to meet our current, our specific development standards. On the other hand, well, it gives flexibility, it gives more control for the city to review the specific design. And they'll, oh, you know, I like that, but maybe I don't like that color or I don't like that material. And so we have more hands on in our review of that. So there's two ways that come to mind rarely.
And then do we currently have in the code to where if someone wants to build a new home, they can choose to not have grass? And then they can just do drought resistant or drought tolerant landscaping currently? Or do they need to have grass?
They're not required to have grass. Currently, the zoning code has limitations on how much of the front yard can be improved with a driveway. We allow one driveway, which has, I think, a minimum width, I want to say 24 feet or 20 feet. I'll look to my engineering friends over here. I know people throughout the city have added additional concrete. The driveway remains the same, but they fanned out the concrete and they they blurred it out or removed the landscaping. Now, residents can, if you want, they can put artificial turf. They can put drought tolerant landscaping. They can just do like rocks and some type of landscape features. All that is completely acceptable.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions at this time? So I will go after public comment. Is there any citizen comments, questions? Anyone on the phone? 956, coming back to the chamber. Anyone in the chamber? Seeing on closing the citizen comments on 956. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion. Almost approved.
I will second it.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by about a 40.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 16, discussion and potential action items. Item number 16, informational compensation analysis for engineering, planning and building departments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and counsel. This is a direction from Mr. Upal and counsel to come up with a compensation analysis for the three departments, engineering, planning and building, even though building and planning are kind of under the same umbrella, but we separated them. So what we'd like to do is just give you an overview and then allow counsel to ask any questions. So I'll call up our HR department to talk a little bit about the analyses as we did and any, and any other information relevant to this. And then I'll chime in as well and we'll go from there. RC, thank you for staying, by the way.
Good evening, counsel. There should be some, Monica, there should be some PDFs that were sent. They're probably in the attachment, sorry. Sorry, they're part of the presentation for today. Yes, the part of the agenda.
Started chatting with her. I apologize. As she's looking that up, I'll just share a little bit additional information. So as part of, I wrote the staff report. And so overall, you know, one of the, you know, over the 25 years that I've been working in this line of work, what I've seen in different municipalities and what I've actually been working with, the best model, Mr. Upal, that I've seen is, is one of, one of a hybridization where we, we look at hiring some interns, some actual staff on the ground and then contracting out some staff. So as part of my staff report, as you could see, I talk a little bit about, you know, small cities and large cities. And then, of course, there's something in between. And so right now, as an example, the planning department, we currently have a contract planner. In that case, it's Mr. Galvez. But we do have Martha, who basically works for the city and is an analyst in that department. And that's worked out, you know, really well, really well. As it relates to engineering, what engineering is a little bit more difficult only because the, for a number of reasons. One is that, and I, and I mentioned that in the staff report, is to find the expertise to, you know, keep him busy. And, and because it requires a number of different disciplinary areas. And then as it relates to the building department, the building department itself, we have spikes in, in construction and, and different projects. And so again, to keep them busy and to, and for OPEB liabilities as well, just trying to look at what it would cost us to actually hire these different individuals in our, in the city. And then one of the things that we also are lacking right now is a space to be able to house not only the employees, but also all of the equipment and things that we would need in order to have those departments to be able to function appropriately. But again, that's kind of just a high overview, but we will go over costs and we'll, we compared to some other cities. And Monica has that information up, so thank you.
So we looked at 10 other cities within Merced, Stanislaus County areas. And I apologize, I know that is very small because we're trying to capture as much detail in the pages. But we surveyed cities, you know, south and north of Livingston with comparables as far as population and size. And for the city engineer position, the building inspector, the city planner position and the city permit technician positions, those were all positions that were surveyed. And with that, we took a baseline using the city of Ripon, which has a population of 16,000, as a base salary, as a starting point. So step A. Here at the city, we have five step grades for each of these classifications. And so, for example, for this building inspector, that's what she has up there. So we'll start with that one. One moment. So for the building inspector position, the base we took of $88,349, which is an annually based salary. And basically, the cost of that, if we take in consideration the healthcare, any group insurance, FICA, PERS, unemployment insurance, workers' comp, that position itself for the building inspector would cost the city $133,723.47 annually. There's a separate spreadsheet as part of the attachment where you can see these numbers in the breakdown. Can you sum that up, Monica? So that building inspector breakdown cost, again, annualized would be $133,000. And taking in mind that this would be at the bottom step if we were to hire a building inspector. This analysis was using our cost proposal software that we use with, again, taking the base salary and projected cost. So we can go ahead and go on to the next classification, which is the city engineer position. At step A, the breakdown cost of that, basically, as a base salary, we would start that position off at $167,205.25. And then with the breakdown and total cost would be annualized at $218,890.22. We were on that same slide that we were up, Monica, sorry. Yes, that one right there. So that's for the city engineer. And again, please take into consideration that the cost that you see on this proposal sheet represents the cost detail at all of these classifications at step A of the salary schedule if we were to hire directly onto our payroll. And then for our city planner position, the base salary would be $166,000. With the other healthcare expenditures annualized, we're looking at $217,654.93. For the permit technician, we took the average of all 10 cities, came up with the baseline, which is $55,675, which equates to about $26 hourly. And then added some additional expenditures with regards to healthcare PERS. So the annualized salary there would be $94,620. In additional, we included the senior admin analyst salary. And again, this is someone at step A, $67,743.49. And included the additional areas of compensation, an annualized salary of $118,608. So for just five positions full time, we're looking at $783,336. And this is a summary of just five full time positions at step A of the salary schedule. Is there any questions? The next sheet, so I took a step A and then we also annualized and said, okay, top step. If we go out and hire or solicitate for someone at, you know, that skills worth that coming in at a higher step. So the top end of this is the step E of what you see here. So the base salary, of course, increases. And with that, the annualized base salary also increases because of that reason. So same situation, but with the increase changing on the base and that impacts the cost on the healthcare, the other items in here, FICA, PERS, unemployment, workers' comp. And so again, using the same process that we did for the cost detail in step A. This is step E. We're looking at $917,350 as an annualized salary for all five classifications. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah. Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes.
Now, all those positions, let's take the building inspector. And those are fixed costs, correct?
That's correct.
So if the economy slows down, we're paying.
Right. And also too, I mean, if And also, too, I mean, if these positions, for example, the healthcare costs, this is what we're looking at now, but as healthcare costs increases, so will these costs.
Okay, and whoever wants to help, Polly, Jose, building inspectors, don't they have various classifications of what they can inspect and what they can't inspect? Or is that a standard? Does anybody know that, Miguel? Or anybody that wants to? Are there different type of inspectors?
Yeah, of course, there's different types of inspectors.
For building, I'm talking about.
Yeah, for building, yeah, we so in terms of who is who we use, like, for instance, in this case, CSG has different inspectors depending on, you know, you know, we're talking industrial, we're talking commercial, usually the commercial and the and the residential kind of fall, you know, pretty much in line. But, you know, for the industrial side of things, you know, those people have more specialty certificates.
So if we hire, and I'm not, we don't know what we're gonna do, say we go in-house We either get somebody that's qualified for commercial, industrial, and residential, or we're gonna have to outsource other items, is that correct?
Yes, again, it would be, we would still, we would still need to go out to contract out, you know, some areas and and as needed basis, because it's not like, you know, we have the same amount of projects and the same type of projects over the course of 12 months.
Okay, and then, let's go to the next step, city engineer. And again, same concerns and not concerns, I should say, but same challenges, right? Because you're gonna have to have a traffic engineer, all different type of engineers, correct?
Yeah, engineering's a little more difficult, because in engineering, we we actually work with, there's so many more disciplines. And and so, we would, you know, if we can find, you know, somebody, an engineer that has expertise in certain areas, and but we would probably need about five engineers. And even with those five engineers, we would still have to contract out some specialty areas.
Yeah, and then, simple question is, if we were to go all in-house, and you're looking at, just round it up, maybe it's not the right number, but between $952 million. Now, most of those costs are paid by developers, people pulling permits and so forth, is that correct?
Yeah, about 90% of of engineering is is paid by grants and developers.
So have we had almost a million dollars of evaluations in the last year? I'm talking about in permits.
I don't know the answer to that question at this point.
Yeah, you know, because I've been here older than the city hall itself, probably in some ways, but we tried that years ago. First of all, we were having trouble recruiting planners and all that because they're looking at the next big check, you know, somebody can get 10% somewhere, they're gone. Now you don't have anybody. Good luck at trying to find somebody always constantly, trying to keep somebody here because it's just, $200,000 may sound like a lot for a planner, but Ripon probably pays close to that, if not more, with benefits. Anytime there's job opening, they're gone. Saying that, you know, I can understand the permit technician, maybe, but because that's not, you know, those jobs aren't that competitive out there, but inspectors, engineers, and planners, they're very competitive. And then, when we did have all those folks in here, the economy slowed, development took down to virtually nothing. And but yet, every month, we had to write the same check, every couple of weeks. They got their check, and we had no way to pay them. We end up having to fire the people, get rid of them, and go back to contracting because in a small city like this, where even though we're working on revenue sharing, we're working on all of that, by the time you get our revenue sharing, expansions done, general plan adopted and all that, you're looking at five to 10 years before any meaningful development comes in. And meantime, you're looking at, what, $10 million in guaranteed cost? I don't know, but folks, I'm willing to explore things, but somebody needs to show me that we're gonna have at least $10 million worth of evaluations, or we're getting a million dollars worth of evaluations now from fees. We're not getting it. I don't know how we're gonna justify it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Is there, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. So based on 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 these numbers and looking at the top scale or top, you know, top tier, we're looking at with all those costs for the one, two, three, four, five, five different staff members. And currently, do we have, so the only one that we have currently that are city employees would be the senior, right? Administrative analyst. So that's $140,000. So we're, in a way, kind of already, the city's already covering that that position, right?
Yeah.
So the way I, looking at these graphs or these tables, I would look at it as, you know, the additional, what would be the additional cost to have the additional personnel? If if council decided to go in-house and hire those four additional staff members, the actual cost wouldn't, the additional, because I think this table, what it does, it does two things. One, it's like, it makes a, it could be interpreted as, okay, we have to spend an additional $917,000, but in reality, not. It would be roughly about about $780,000 additional to have the building inspector, the city engineer, city planner, and the permit technician. And and then, even using these numbers, and actually, in the report, I think there was provided, can you go lower to the, Monica, to where it has, like, the three months cost of, I think we have building and engineering, more down to the bottom. I think it's, actually, it's page 399, right below, right below. We're almost there. No, no, go up more. Yeah. Right there. So here we have, like, three, three months' cost for engineering and building and inspector. And in three months, based on those tables, for building inspector, we have a total cost for three months, $51,000 for three months. More or less, if we use those numbers and, you know, we're calculating what the cost would be for a year, roughly, I'm not saying exactly, because obviously, every month is different and so on, but on an average, using those three months that were provided, the cost for building inspector would be 200,000. The cost for for a planner would be 95,000. And the cost for engineering for those three months would be 285,000. So, no, I'm sorry, yes, 285,000, based on those three months up here. If I add 285 plus a 51,000 plus a 95,000, it gives me a total roughly about 431,000 for three months' cost. So if I was to multiply that times four for the whole year, more or less, and I'm just using the average, the cost would be a million, like, almost a million 300,000. So even that number right now, based using these numbers here, it's higher than the 900,000. So I agree, it has to make sense. And then, also, I'm looking at, I'm looking at cost for engineering, just engineering, I don't have all the numbers. And I think, I think I would like to have more information for council to be able to have a more ample conversation that would be helpful to really, you know, make a final decision, you know. I don't think we have, I don't think I would, I feel like we don't have all the information that I think it's it's needed to be able to make a decision one way or the other. But based on numbers that I have from 2017 to 2018, and I think, so this is just for engineering, there was, the city paid 590,000 for 2018, 2019, 600,000. From 2019 to 2020, 800,000. 2020 to 2021, 500,000. 21 to 22, 700,000. 22 to 23, almost 600,000. 23 to 24, 560,000. So just that alone, right there, it's it's it doubles the cost of what the most expensive engineer, if we were to hire in-house.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If we're gonna call back for further analysis, it goes back to my original question, is if we go in-house engineer, just what is that individual capable of, what certifications do they have? And if they can't, we're gonna have to go outside again. And right now, regardless of whatever level of engineering we need, it's already included in there. So the base salary will be that, that if that person, we have to do traffic engineering, and that person not qualified, then that has to be outsourced, it adds to that total cost. And if that person is doing industrial building, that person, if not qualified, we have to outsource. Commercial, it's a lot of components of the engineering that one individual is not gonna be, if that one individual is certified or capable of all of them, you're gonna, you're gonna charge, they're gonna charge a lot more than that. There's no way that you're gonna just get away with $200,000 engineer out of that.
And, you know, I I think you are partly agreeing with what I'm saying, that we need more information.
I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just saying we need more information. But if we're gonna bring back information, Mr. Mayor, I I hope that that's included, that one level of engineering, it's complicated, I get that, okay? It is. That that no one individual is gonna be, if we have that, how much do we expect it to be outsourced? How much is the additional cost for all those positions? That need to be included in the final bill before we do that. And then, also, we don't know, say that they're looking at housing downturn again and economy slowing down, how we're gonna pay for those costs, they're built in. You know, so we've got a lot of tough decisions, and I do agree with you, I'm more than willing to get more information, of course, okay? Thank you.
Yes, totally agree. And and I think that even, and then, I agree that there's always gonna be the time where we're gonna need probably an additional outside contractor, you know, for either one of those services. And I think that's probably even already the situation with Govea, because I've seen some of the invoices, and sometimes they have to go out to other, other agencies for that additional support. So that's gonna happen no matter what, so totally, I agree. So and and that's what I'm saying, you know, I think that in order for council to make a a decision either way, I think, you know, we should give it more time and bring this item back again with additional information that everybody can have to make a well-rounded decision for the benefit of moving forward and not, and not, you know, feel like we're, we don't have, or somebody else doesn't have all the information and have to make a decision now.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if you guys feel that you don't have enough information, but in order to prevent that from happening the next go-around, if you guys can provide some more direction. But before we go there, let me just say that in this particular case, we're trying to compare apples to apples. The unfortunate part is that you got a Fiji apple, and then you got a fire apple. So there are apples. So let me just walk you guys back a little bit, okay? It's it's very difficult to compare previous years, because every year, there's different projects, there's different scope, of course, due to inflation, you know, everything goes up in price. The the, and so, we were trying to do the best we could to, you know, provide you, you know, the the best numbers. So we took the last three months to give each the each category a sense of what it's costing, but if we if we took, you know, last year or the year before, well, it's information, and you can make comparisons, but even though they're apples, they're not quite the same type of apple, okay? And so, where I'm going now, next, is, it's, it's, okay, part of this whole scenario is you also have to take into account some other other aspects. For instance, any employees that we bring in, and I'm not against unionization, but I need to make sure that you guys are aware of, that any new employee, maybe in the engineering, we could, we can, you know, have some contracts with, you know, some of those, but they would still fall under, you know, the management confidential group, you know, in order to have some at-will. So when you hire in-house, it's, you have to go through a progressive disciplinary process, you can't, you know, it's a little more difficult. So, again, I'm not weighing one or the other, I'm just sharing the extra information. We also, the other thing that I always look at is also OPEB liabilities. And what that is, is that, okay, money that we have to put forward for their retirement, once there are employees, there are employees, and we have to set a certain dollar amount. And so, when we go through these union negotiations, for instance, these are the numbers without taking into account what we're negotiating now. So you would have to add whatever we're negotiating now on top of these numbers right now. And and so, what are some of the advantages of having in-house? You know, you have, you know, thorough oversight and control, that's great, you know, there's, you have a built-in, you know, institutional knowledge, you have quicker response times because we can, you know, huddle my staff together. And then, there is cost savings, but the cost savings are really in the long term, not short term. Now, some of the disadvantages, you have, you know, the initial investment, the the overhead that you have to take into account. And and then, you also have, you know, technology and best practices, you know, we would have to have somebody who's going to serve as, you know, kind of like the project manager or the program manager to make sure that we're always pushing, you know, these folks on the up and up. And then, of course, hiring and keeping folks and recruiting folks is not that easy. We we went through this exercise, I wasn't here, but the city did hire a planner, and unfortunately, it didn't work out. And so, that person was let go before the probationary period ended. And then, you know, so those are all factors that we need to take into account. So if we look at, like, for instance, say, the the building side of things, So if we look at, like for instance, say, the, the, the building side of things, we can, if we can find a permit tech, we don't have enough work for them just to do permit tech. So we would have to look at possibly having them help out in the, in the planning department to kind of be, kind of like a, somebody who's overseeing, making sure that all the, the, the applications that are coming in are, are going to every department and that they're, you know, moving along, kind of like a woodsman. Under the planning department, I'm sure we can, we can keep a planner busy, not necessarily on projects. So it'd be a combination of projects and then looking at doing zoning text amendments, you know, and other projects. If we, if we're lucky to get somebody, you know, like Miguel, that's, has these different areas. But even on the, on the housing element, he would still have to contract out to, you know, to get that done. So we would still be dependent on outside consultants. The engineering side, on the engineering side, hiring one engineer, that, it wouldn't be suffice. We would, if you guys are seriously looking at doing something in the engineering department, I would recommend that you guys look at hiring at least four to five engineers. Why? Because in engineering, you have electrical, you have mechanical, you have civil, you have surveying. And then geotech, we don't need a geotech, so we can always find somebody to do some of that work. But in these other areas, it's going to be difficult, very difficult. And then you look at the wages, you're, we're, we're going to have to do a compensation and classification study, because as you bring in these engineers and you're trying to be competitive, their salaries, just to get them in, are going to be probably in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, okay? And so that means that to actually house them and find them, all of the other employees' wages are going to have to go up, because they can't be making more than some of the, the other department heads. Then, in, in addition to that, engineering is a little more specialized in that they require supercomputers, not computers that we are currently using in-house. It requires special licensing. You're going to have to get some plotters, and that's going to require space. They require, IT is not going to be able to come in and address the issues in the engineering side. There's going to have to be a separate server just for engineering. There. And then the other thing is keeping them busy every month, all year. You know, again, there's, there's, there's peaks and valleys, you know? And so I just mentioned all these things so that if we're looking for, it, it's going to look like, it's going to be a hybrid system, where we're going to have to have in-house and still contract. But finding that perfect balance so that there's no disruptions and that we can have continuity. And, and then the recruitment period to find all the folks that we need is, it can't happen over the course of a few months, and it's going to require a good competitive salary and benefits. And I think that we're great in terms of benefits, but in terms of being able to recruit, I think it's going to be a heavier lift.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments, questions at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in.
Yes, go ahead.
I really appreciate all the commentary on the dais. I did request this item, and so I'm glad this came back. And I, I want to add some additional context to the discussion that's been had. To start, I do agree that we're going to end up with some form of hybrid model. I mean, right now, we already have some formal hybrid models, so even if it doesn't change, that's where we're going to be. To be clear, I think it's extremely unrealistic to add every single one of the positions that we talked about, and I would not expect to push in that direction. I don't think it's going to pan out. I had a very large data request for this item, which I sent to staff a couple of weeks back. I asked for data for the last seven fiscal years, even though we can't predict what things look like. Think times are going to be up and down. It's good to get as broad of a perspective as we can, because we still know what we're getting invoiced for, how many hours we're getting invoiced for, and the cost of that. I sent that email to Monica and Mark right now. I'm not sure if we can share that with the rest of the council or not, but I did want to put it on the record to explore so that council can get an idea of exactly what was requested. I don't think we're going to be able to make this decision without having a larger data sample, and then also some of the nuances that you just mentioned. Mr. Mayor, as you're talking about classification studies, cost for computers, that stuff that I'm not taking into account, because I'm not aware of, that will need to be considered as well. But at the end of the day, no matter what the cost is going to look like, one way or another, it's nothing that we can't measure and compare, if we have enough data to look at. Right now, we are already getting invoices, which tell us exactly what the hourly rates are and how many hours are being worked. So we can put together some data that shows average hours worked per week or per month, the cost for those, and we'll get a dollar cost for hours per week. And we can get together all the costs that we're going to look at for different types of hybrid models and say, what does the cost per week look for that? Even though there's ups and downs in terms of work that's done, that cost per week measure is going to be standard and solid to compare, regardless of what things look like, because what we've been invoiced for is already reflective of those peaks and valleys. And so I think we need to get to a point where we can measure how many hours are being worked and the cost for those hours worked, and compare those models side by side. Another thing really quickly, I, I want to make sure that we're clear on where these numbers stand right now. Our three-month averages that we have up for the different positions worked. Let's just start with planning. Right now, in the last three months, we've spent an average of thirty-one thousand dollars on planning services. That would come out to three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars annually. And we know that's well above the position for a full-time city planner, even if we start with the top step. Something to consider. Yes, there's going to be peaks and valleys, but again, if we look past to a broader sample, we can see what those hourly rates look like. And let's also be mindful of the fact that we are generally planning on doing more as we get all of our planning up to speed. We are in the process of updating our general plan. We are actively having discussions about what the town's going to look like. Is it going to take a handful of years to do? Absolutely, but that doesn't mean we're just going to sit here and not plan for the long term. So I do think it's very important to have that in the back of our mind and know that the decisions that we make and evaluate right now are setting us up for that future. Not that we're waiting five to 10 years to come back and say, now it's time to move. And we have the opportunity to do that, if we look at this holistically. And so, council, Mark, first, am I allowed to share what I asked for with council?
Yes, I just reviewed the email you sent me, and I don't see any confidential information in here.
Right, and it, it'd be a public record anyway, I just know we have Brown Act restrictions when we're not at the dais. So council, I hope that you can get this forwarded to you. I would like to know all money that we've paid to our contract planners from fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, to present. Generally, I was thinking five years, but as we know, we didn't get much done from about twenty twenty-one to a couple of years after. So I would, I asked for invoices and money paid for those, for planning, for engineering. I didn't ask for building, but as Mr. Ramirez noted, it's a part of this discussion, and so it'd likely be included. And I'd like to get to a point where we can compare those averages to what we're planning to expand in our current model, because we know what we have in the books. We've already awarded money for certain contracts, like the, the MCAG funds that we awarded engineering for. The night that I got sworn in, we approved nine hundred thousand dollars in federal funds for engineering. I can't remember exactly what that was for, but I do know it was on the agenda. So we know, we have a general idea of what we're going to be budgeting for, and then we'll have the ability to get all these costs together that we talked about. And again, come back to a measurable cost per hour, very easy measure, regardless of how we're looking. And I, I think we can get to a point where we have that all on the table.
Council, any other questions this time? So so I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is that we want to bring this back at a later date. Is there a date, or should we just leave it as?
Well, I mean, given how large the request is, I don't want to put a date on it and, you know, expect staff to move sooner than is realistic. And so I will leave that up to city manager's recommendation of what we think is actually feasible to get all that data back and compare these models.
You know, this is something very important for council, so we're going to act on it, and, and we'll probably have interaction to make sure that even though we think we, we're speaking the same language, that we, you know, we meet your guys' expectations. So my hope is that we should be able to come back in October, probably the second meeting in October. If we can bring it sooner, we will do that. I want to put a date so that, you know, staff has, you know, a milestone. And yeah, we'll go from there.
All right, so, so we're bringing this back in possibly the second week of October. And so there's no action, additional action needed. Direction has been given to staff, unless there's any additional questions. Seeing none, okay. Next, we have announcements and reports, city council members' announcements and reports. Mr. Jason Wright?
National report tonight, just community, please, more prayers for Mr. Wallace's wife. She's trying to recover, so thank you.
Thank you. Council member Paul?
Just one item. I participated in, I don't know, would you call it an interview? Just informal meeting with folks from the San Francisco Chronicle. They wrote an article on voting trends in Livingston, which was actually published today. I'm not getting, getting into the nuances around it, but some interesting information that they found about voting trends in our town.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Yeah, unfortunately, interim chief is gone, but I, I wanted to thank the PD for all the hard work they did on Sunday for the, for the ladies' festival. There he is. Hey, thank you again for all the ladies wanting to extend their thank yous to your group over there. Some of them were very good at eating snacks and stuff. Some were being a little shy, but okay, then no worries. But I'm sure some of them came back, but they were very pleased, even though we didn't get a chance to get our explorers in. But the staff, the support they got from others was more than sufficient. Thank you very much, chief.
I'm going to be very brief. We attended, council member Paul forgot, but we attended the Recreation Commission meeting. And one of the things that was brought up during that meeting was the desire for, for a community garden. And I've been in communication with a couple of people in the city, but one of the things that comes up is, is like, how long to, how long to be able to have a community garden in private land? And most of the time, it's, you know, a year, two years, that they would be okay with having it there. But I think that the community, what the, you know, what I'm hearing from the community and also from recreation and from other community organizations is that they want to have a fixed location possibly for a community garden, where everybody knows, you know, because there's going to be a lot of work being done to be able to have a community garden. Also, that conversation came up with FFA from the Livingston High School, which they are starting their own garden at the high school. So, and, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So to my point is that if the city, we probably need to look at, if that is something that we, as council and city, we want to support, to look at what the city currently has that can work as a community garden, you know, possibly long-term. Because like I said, there's going to be a lot of work that is going to be going into something like that. So, so maybe I'll have a conversation with Mr. Ramirez later to see, you know, and kind of brainstorm about that and, and see what options might be available, and then bring that back to recreation and back to Lions also, that we're very interested in. Livingston Lions that were interested in the community garden and other partners in the, in the city. Other than that, no more updates. Next, we have council member, council director on future agenda items. Is there any, any agenda items from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like for us to discuss a potential policy, a potential update to the municipal code on justification for sole source. Mr. Ramirez, I know you're already working on a procurement policy. This may be something that gets looped into that, but would like to bring that back at some point. Not time-sensitive, but definitely important for procurement purposes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Paul. Yeah, we, we're working closely with legal on, on, on that procurement and, and what the direction this evening will, will look at the sole source to beef it up some better, better.
Council, anything else? Hearing none, meeting adjourned at ten forty-six.